So 9:00 PM. I'm gonna ask our newest councilwoman, could you please lead us in the invocation today? And councilwoman, Angie Reyes English, the pledge of allegiance, please, for today.
Bow our heads, please. Thank you, Father, for this opportunity to serve you and to come together, to join as a community and to serve each other, Lord. We thank you for all that you provide in this community and how you bring us together and make us stronger together, Lord. Please guide this meeting tonight, allow us to do your will and what needs to be done in our community, and we ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Can you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? And if I could please have our military, those that have served in office or service, can you please just raise your hand? Let's give them an acknowledgement. Thank you so much for your service. Place your hand over your heart, repeat after me. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Protem Manning.
Here.
Mayor Vargas.
Here. Thank you, ma'am.
So we have a certificate of recognition as our first item tonight. Councilmember Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Can I have Tim and Loretta Hagerty to the podium, please? All right. Thank you for coming tonight. So I'm gonna read this proclamation because you too has been a blessing for the city of Hawthorne, you know, for decades, every year. You've been Santa Claus and Mother Claus and to so many other events. And for those of you who didn't see this newsletter, they were on the cover of the recent one, but your selfishness, you know, to dedicate your time, has made us better city, okay? So I'm gonna read this. "Reconnaissance to Tim and Loretta Hagerty. The city of Hawthorne acknowledges with pride, Tim and Loretta Hagerty, longstanding resident of Ramona Track area and devoted member of Hawthorne community, whose relentless volunteer endeavor have significant contribute to the enhancement of our city. Tim and Loretta Hagerty have graciously dedicated their time and talent as active participant in the Hawthorne Parks and Recs Foundation, thereby supporting its mission to improve for creation opportunity for residents and facilitating the success of the annual Parks and Recs Foundation golf tournament and others. Their kindness, dedication, and willingness to serve is a true essence of the good neighbors. It exemplifies the spirit of civic engagement, community development, and neighborhood compassion that strengthens the social fabric of our city. The city of Hawthorne extends its sincere gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Tim and Loretta Hagerty for their extraordinary contribution, tireless voluntary efforts, and for exemplifying the true meaning of the city of good neighbors in our cherished our city. Recognize this 11th day of February 2025 as your day in the city of Hawthorne. Thank you."
I'd like to thank you for this. This is really an honor. And it all started, well, 10 years ago when Don McIntyre gave me a call and said, would you be Santa Claus for us? Because I talked to him earlier that I used to do it for the neighborhood. And when I first started doing it, all those kids are like in their 30s now. But I've only been doing it for the city for the last 10 years. And then Mrs. Claus started with me, oh, about seven years ago. So it's a lot of fun to do. And it's amazing what you hear from the kids when they come up. Like, one story I'll have to tell you about was two brothers, and they were real believers. And I was talking, well, what did you like for Christmas? And they told me. And then they started walking away, and the one brother turned around and goes, can you do me a favor? I go, what's that? Will you get something nice for my mom?
Yeah.
He was supposed to have been about, I think he was maybe about five years old. It's really nice to hear that from the kids. There's a lot of stories like that I could talk about.
And for the kids that I hear, Santa and Mrs. Claus just came from the Paul Nord, okay?
Go ahead.
To the chair. Thank you. Mr. and Ms. Hagerty, thank you so much for what you do in the city of Hawthorne. To be honest, I, you actually had me fooled once. I didn't know who you were until I started putting, you know, one-on-one together. But you've been such friends of the city, especially the annual Christmas giveaway that we have as a council, and lending you out to our city employees and their events and functions. You've been just a great inspiration and hope for us all with regards to Mr. and Ms. Santa Claus and just making it a festive and more promising Christmas each year for the times that you've served. Thank you so much.
To the chair. Oh, my gosh. When I talk about role models, you guys are such role models. You're always smiling. You guys are always together. And you are definitely, look alike Santa on TV. So I know that's probably your second job, that you go and body double on TV, but when I see you at all of the events at Santa, I just think about when I was growing up as a little girl. And so I'm just wondering if I can get some new gifts, like ahead of this coming Christmas in 2025. I still try to get my daughter to believe in Santa, but she's 21, so. But Christmas is my favorite, favorite holiday. And because of you, Santa, I still love Christmas. It's the most beautiful holiday ever because it's about giving. And that's what you guys continue to do for our city, as you continue to give of yourselves. And we greatly appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
To the chair. I just want to say thank you, too. I had the pleasure of getting to know you guys during the, when I was the chair of the Veterans Affairs Commission. And working with you to get your father's picture, military picture up was very important to you and it was important to us. And just getting to know you through that process was wonderful. And then to see you as Santa, I had no idea that you guys played Santa. I mean, I was like, wait a minute, I know them from somewhere. And it was just a joy, and my grandbabies love it. They look at those pictures and they're like, that's Santa. That's his wife. I didn't know Santa had a wife. You know, so you brought a lot of joy to people over the holidays. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys for stepping up for the Santa role. You know, it's like, you know, just, you had me fooled, so, you know, I was about to sit on your lap, too, man, but, oh, no, I can't be doing that. Too old for that. But thank you so much for that and being civically involved. You're always, you know, you're always here at the meetings. You're at all the different events. You try to make it to as many events as possible, so you're involved. And that's what we need even more of in the community. And, you know, you're a good, awesome example of what it should look like. So thank you, guys, for being good civic members of the city of Hawthorne.
Thank you.
Oral communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54 dot 3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation. For the record, as of 5:00 PM today, we have received 23 emails in favor of keeping leaps and bounds as a tenant at Hawthorne Aquatic Center. And that has been provided to all council members.
Thank you for letting us know. All right, let's start off with Pat Donaldson.
Thank you, Mayor. Patricia Donaldson, President and CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I just want to say that on March 13th, we're gonna have St. Patrick's Day mixer at the Marriott from 5:30 to 7:30. There'll be $100 door prize and a $50 door prize and a $25 door prize. So, and a lot of food, so I hope that you all come, and drinks, but not alcohol. So that's March 13th at the Marriott right here. And then I just want to mention that we need to keep Rick Carver in our prayers. I think everyone knows what happened to him, so. He slipped and fell and cracked his head open and blood to his brain, and he's, he'll be okay, but he's in bad shape right now. So keep him in your prayers, please.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Carol Maston. Hi.
Okay, hello, council. I'm Carol Maston. I'm 50, I've lived in Hawthorne for 53 years, and I've come before you today just to speak about the condition of my neighborhood. We have some illegal dumping going on, and I have this illegal dumping number that does not work. I've called several times. One time I called the mayor, the mayor, and the illegal dumping was picked up right away, but I hate to disturb him. We should have a good number that we can call and get our alleys cleaned up. I live at, off of alley behind Atherton's, I'm sorry, Olivet Lutheran's Church. And yesterday, around 12:49, this contractor drove up and dumped his items behind my house. I couldn't, I got it on my Ring video, and I sent it to, I think, L. Jackson is where they told me to send the video. I came down today to the city hall, and I spoke with a lady at the information desk, and she told me that, I told her the numbers don't work. I've called and called, nobody calls me back. They say, well, we check the emails every day, and we'll call you back, but they don't. So I came down in person, and I talked to the lady, and she said, she gave me the code enforcement number, and I called, and I, and the email address. So I emailed the video to ljackson@cityofhawthorne.org. And I'm hoping I get a response, but now with the fires and everything going on, I don't want these contractors to be dumping in our city when they're supposed to go and pay some, and pay somewhere and dump their stuff, but they are dumping in Hawthorne, in our alley, and the sign is right behind my house, no dumping, there's a fine, but nobody pays attention to that. So I'm just asking the city to really look into this now because we're gonna, they're gonna trash our city, and we don't deserve that. And I'm just asking you, some of you, to just come over east of Crenshaw, drive through the neighborhood, look at some of the alleys, and you'll see that they're atrocious. And we need help. So, and we need a good illegal dumping number because the number that you have on file is no good. I've called and called, and 311 is fine, but it's a whole process, too. And we should have, as a citizen, I should have a number that I can just call immediately and get the trash of these items picked up. When I call the graffiti number, they're out right away, like the same day or even the next day, but not the dumping. And it just keeps piling up. And I have pictures that I've sent, so I'm just asking for some consideration from the council to look into this and see if we can get something done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And it's been on our radar, and there's some things that we're gonna be working on, actually, even before you came up. So thank you very much, ma'am. Rob Williams.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Just want to talk about, actually, just a couple of things, lighthearted stuff, really. But I really enjoyed the events that we've kind of had, especially councilwoman's racing, which is a classic car thing. That was really fun. I love cars, so to have that, that was really nice. What I'd like to see, and the movie is in the park, it's been great, too. What I'd like to see is something that I had, that I enjoyed as a kid. And Mayor, you kind of talked about yesterday at Mr. Hocker's memorial, was the parade and the carnival we used to have. And I think it'd be a great idea at some point if we could bring that back. My mom used to take me to Hawthorne Boulevard for the parade. I got to sit down and, you know, watch the parade go by between, what, Rosecrans and El Segundo, and then the carnival, which, when I was a kid at Anza, my aunt chaperoned me and my elementary school girlfriend to the carnival, and we just had a lot of fun there. And, you know, that's why, that's why I grew up, you know, growing up in Hawthorne, like you, Mr. Mayor, just, you know, a lot of fun there with the carnival. I think it's something we should maybe look to get that going again, the parade and the carnival. Second item is, we got, with the new city, city hall that we're going to be building, I thought it would be kind of a great idea if maybe we named it in recognition of our late, great mayor, Mr. Hawthorne Guy Hocker. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kathy Gore.
Hello, everybody. Good evening to our mayor and councilpeople and all the staff. I'm Kathy Gore, and I've been a Hawthorne resident since 1995. I'm also the founder of South Bay Swim Team, which has been headquartered at the Hawthorne Pool since we started the team in 2000. We are the hometown swim team. And I hope you receive the holiday cards that we sent everybody every year. Joining me is Coach Rachel Pinto. She's now the head coach, as I've been transitioning into retirement over the last couple of months. And also my son Tristan, who's a member of the team, and he's been on the team for seven years. We wanted to bring all the members of the team to celebrate a recent victory that we had at the South Central Swim League's Winter Championship Meet. We placed first overall out of 10 teams, and all the swimmers came home with lots of medals, right, T? But the agenda was already closed, so we hope we can come to a future council meeting. At the last council meeting, there was a discussion about adding a spring rec swim program at the Hawthorne Pool. There's already a very generous lap swimming schedule for adults, and we think adding rec swim is a great idea. It would offer for the community even more access to the pool. However, the time proposed, our team and lots of other programs may be displaced or moved to later times. The swim team is year-round, and we typically have about 90 to 100 swimmers. Our team has always been made up of mostly Hawthorne residents, and we offer priority joining to Hawthorne families. We also serve surrounding communities like LA and Inglewood and Lawndale and others. So while rec swim would definitely serve the community and the community members, the swim team also serves the Hawthorne community, and we've been doing that for almost 25 years. After talking with recreation staff, it sounds like the plan is for rec swim to be in the shallow section of the pool. And if this is the case, we would like to maintain our current schedule, which is in the 25-yard lane, 20, competitive lane section. There's ample space for groups to coexist at the pool and offer as many things as possible. and offer as many things as possible to the community. So the staff shared with us a proposal, though, that would have our starting time moving to later, 6 o'clock. And this would be a challenge to many of our families, given that our swim team ages range from six years old all the way up to 17. So especially those families with younger swimmers, it would be a hardship to start at a later time and thus finish at a later time. So please consider allowing our swim team to keep its current schedule while including and welcoming rec swim patrons to join in so we can all enjoy this wonderful Hawthorne Pool that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Gray?
Hello there. My name is Catherine Gray, and I'm one of the swim coaches for Leaps and Bounds Program at the Hawthorne Pool. I was not expecting to go first on this issue, but I'll just say my little piece. Just got out of the pool. Teaching got out early so we could come and address this issue. I'll just start with just a statistic that drowning is the leading cause of death in children. So it's really important for us to get children water-safe. So especially children with autism spectrum disorder. There's, I know what you guys think that a swim school is like, because, because of the statistics, a lot of people make a ton of money off of this, just with crazy programs, just making a ton of money. And this is not what we are. We are specifically for autism spectrum disorder, and there really are no programs like the one that we have. There's nowhere else for them to learn how to be water-safe. That's pretty much all I got to say. Thank you.
Cynthia Allen?
Good evening to all of you guys. My son is an adult with autism that participates in the Leaps and Bounds Swim Program on Mondays and Wednesdays at the City of Hawthorne. And while we are not residents, while we're not residents of the City of Hawthorne, I am invested, because my sister has been a 10-year resident of the City of Hawthorne. And I'm here to implore you to reconsider your termination of the arrangements that you have with Leaps and Bounds. I think it's an invaluable program that benefits the city. It benefits residents and surrounding areas of the City of Hawthorne. I can speak of all the things it does, like conditioning, and health, and safety, and water safety. But I think for my son, it has just given him invaluable confidence, which he can't get otherwise. So I do think that the swim program with Leaps and Bounds can coexist with some of the programs that you already have. And I think it is a valuable asset to the City of Hawthorne to even be able to flex and say that they have this program for individuals with disabilities. So I really would implore that you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So when you come up here, please state your address, name address, please. Wendy Chavez?
To the chair.
Miss?
According to the Brown Act, they're not required to give their address.
I'm just asking them to. Thank you. They choose not to, that's up to them. I have the information here. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm going to read from what I have. I'm, I speak on behalf of my two amazing kiddos, Jaclyn and Brandon Chavez. I'd like to urge you to reconsider that your decision to remove Leaps and Bounds as a tenant from Hawthorne Aquatic Center. My family receives swimming recreation services through Leaps and Bounds at the Hawthorne Pool for both my neurodiverse children, one who is an adult with disabilities. It has helped both my, oh, sorry, it has helped my son in many ways. He is able to better communicate his needs, wants, and feelings, abilities that have been very challenging for him before. With the help of the amazing coaches and from Leaps, he is able to use his speech at school and in social settings more consistently across many social settings. Both Jaclyn and Brandon benefit highly from these, from the lessons provided from Leaps and Bounds. This organization provides access to safe, to learning water safety, socialization, recreation, health, and fitness in safe and supported environments with experienced staff trained in areas of adaptive sports and recreation. This service funded through Westside Regional Center allows us to access without paying out of pocket. There's no other existing service comparable to what Leaps and Bounds offers in the area. The loss of Leaps and Bounds Aquatic Recreation Program will be extremely detrimental to both my children's quality of life and would limit their access to fundamental swim, safety skills, and recreational opportunities, not to mention the disruption to their schedule and routine, which directly affects their health and quality of learning at school. No other service in the area provides that benefit, provides them that benefit as much as swim sessions do. We aren't Hawthorne residents, but I did grow up in this area. I attended all the schools in Hawthorne. We are residents of Longdale, and we love coming to Tatas. Every time, that flight is amazing. I just urge you to reconsider, because it does directly affect their life in every single day. Every Tuesday, Monday and Thursday, we're here, and the minute that that changes, it affects them directly. So I urge you to please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Shelly Alfaro?
Good evening. I'm coming to, oh, sorry. Hi, my name is Shelly Alfaro. This is my beautiful daughter, Gabrielle Alfaro, who is one of the many, many children's benefit for swimming class. And I plead for you guys to reconsider the decision. This program helped a lot. We never thought she was going to follow instructions, she was going to swim by herself, and it's everything thanks to Leap and Bounds. They worked hard for these kids to have a normal life. And if you guys close the program, the impact is going to be big for these kids. That's the only thing I want to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. You're welcome, of course. All right, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven other cards that presumptively there have the same message. So, Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to exercise that,
If...
discretion here.
If we're getting the repetitive statements, same identical statements, if you have something different to say, that's fine. But if it's going to be everybody saying the same thing, exactly the same thing, then, then we need to move on with the meeting, okay?
I'm going to read. Of course. So, in the spirit of addressing that, I'm going to mention the names of the people who are going to come to speak, so that your name is entered into the record. Wendell Jordan, Sean Cochran, Wendy Rodriguez, Maria Gutierrez, Cindy Hernandez, John Rodriguez Rodriguez, and Scott Watson. Okay? All right, so I just want to, Mr. City Attorney? It's just a very brief, that I'm going to just...
So if you, for those people that submitted the card, if you have something different to say, that's fine for you to come up and say it. But if you're going to say the same thing, then we just need to move on, because we don't need to hear the same message over and over and over.
All right, real quick...
We have one hand up.
To the chair.
No, ma'am, we're going to continue with this. We'll just open it up at an appropriate spot. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thanks for having me tonight.
What is your name, sir?
Sean Cochran. I am the manager of the swim program at Leaps and Bounds. So I wanted to come up and give you some more specifics on what we do as a program, who we service, some monetary statistics as well. Leaps and Bounds has been an operation on the west side, including the area, this area of Hawthorne and surrounding areas, for about 18 years. I've been with the company for about 17 years. Let me get back to my notes. We specialize in servicing the population of adults and minors with autism spectrum disorder and related disorders as well. We work with all age groups and all functioning levels. The families that receive our services, because we're in partnership with the Regional Center, Westside Regional Center, which services the Hawthorne area and surrounding areas, they receive funding for the services that we provide, which includes swimming lessons, which includes swimming safety, and also instruction on swimming strokes and so forth. We did begin with a relationship with the Hawthorne Pool in September of 2023. We were very excited. It's an area that the Regional Center actually urged us to find, to service this area down here, because we were only at the Santa Monica Swim Center. And that is a very difficult commute for families in this area. So we have really hit a lot of families that weren't receiving any services at all, swimming-related, by establishing that partnership with the Hawthorne Pool. So it's been very exciting. We do have close to 100 families that are in the Hawthorne and surrounding neighboring areas that we do service on a weekly basis. Our relationship right now is we're at the pool from 3:00 to 6:00, Monday through Friday. And those times work with our families. They have their school-aged children, parents that work as well. So the 3:00 to 6:00 time does coincide with the proposed 4:00 to 6:00 time for the recreational family swim that is, you guys are in wanting to implement at the Hawthorne Aquatic Center. I do see that, I do believe that the amount of space that the Hawthorne Pool does offer, there's plenty of space to go around, I think to coexist in the same space and for everyone to sort of, you know, enjoy the pool and the setting and also benefit. Because these kids desperately need these services in order to live a more productive life. Some statistics really quick. As my coworker said, it is the leader, drowning is the leading cause of children deaths. Also, some financial statements. We give the city about $5,000 a month in rent, which, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. So again, let me... Thank you guys all for being here, expressing yourselves. This is, has to be brief. I can't have a full response, okay? But understand that, you know, even I have family members that are touched by special needs. And members of the council here are also touched by that. But your directors of this program have done you a disservice in lying to you and not being truthful. This program has not been closed. You have not, we have not revoked any permit for the group. So it's very false and misleading what they're doing. We received about 10, 15 emails that everybody's all panicked, thinking that we're going to remove the program. It's false. It's false. I think you should, sir. Sir, you don't need to respond. Because you were reached out, your group was reached out to two times. Once, once by our city attorney, which, by the way, it's informed you that you're breaking what's called a Brown Act violation in talking and sending an email to three council members at the same time. But also claiming that we were trying to take away the hours, or not to take away the hours, but just close the program, that's not true. So this was misrepresented by the people who are organizing that group. And then our park, our parks and rec coordinator also talked to your, to the directors of this group, whoever manages this program, and told them that they were, to work with them, that no, it was not being closed, and that you guys had accessibility, just need to work around, work with us on the scheduling aspect of it, okay? So I just want to highlight that. Your directors in the Leaps and Bound program have been disingenuous with you. We support different programs in the city. But at the same time, we're trying to have a full complement of services, just like Torrance does, just like Manhattan Beach does, just like Hermosa Beach does, all these fancy cities that everybody's trying to say, "Why can't we have all these programs?" Okay? Is there a possibility of coexistence? Yeah. If your directorships continue talking to our staff to coordinate. There's never been a seizure of services or revoking of permits. So please continue, Mr., and our city attorney will contact the leadership group with Leaps and Bounds just to underline some of these things that we mentioned, okay? All right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on something else?
Hello, everyone. My name is Gordon Michael Migo, native resident of Hawthorne since October 8, 1952. Yesterday, I was at the Hawthorne Memorial Center attending the celebration of life of our former mayor, Realtor Guy Hocker Jr. And it was attended by hundreds of people there. It was a beautiful event, you know. And seeing all the family members that went onstage and speaking, and, you know, from the children, grandchildren, grandchildren, and all that, and heartfelt, you know, thoughts and all that about their life with their father, grandfather, and so forth. And so it was just fantastic. And of course, a lot of you made it to the event as well, and had a few words to say. And sometimes it occurred to me that, you know, there's always talk about, you know, honoring a great gentleman, you know, Guy Hocker and all. And inasmuch as that he had been, you know, part-owner of the Robert F. Kennedy Medical Center, I thought, as we approach in trying to get government officials on different levels, corporations, foundations, you know, hospital facilities, you know, at all, working together to bring back a hospital to the City of Hawthorne, I think, you know, we would have to obviously rebuild the campus over there, different buildings for different things, including for veterans and, you know, seniors, et cetera, et cetera. That I think we could dedicate portions of the new hospital complex to Guy J. Hocker Jr. And I think that would be a real great tribute for him. And I hope that, you know, the folks here, you know, on the dais and, you know, the city manager, city attorney, and so forth, all will start collaborating and reaching out to all the different entities that can make a hospital possible. So I, I hope you take this to heart and really try to make this happen. I know there's been suggestions of possibly a doctor's hospital, or like I suggested, we could work with the, you know, veterans organizations to bring services right here, you know, have a dedicated facilities. And just all different kinds of special needs, you know, including just a regular hospital facility. So, you know, the population has doubled in, you know, in LA County, and of course, you know, Centennial Hospital cannot really handle what it's handling as it is, and, and we can't rely on, you know, the two Torrance hospitals, Torrance Memorial, Little Company Mary, and Gardena, and so forth. There's going to come a time when we're going to be really up a creek, when, I mean, we had like the forest fires, and we had the wildfires and so forth, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Superintendent, were you going to be addressed, Superintendent Mark Aaron, were you also going to be addressing us? Okay, go ahead, go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, good evening.
There she is.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Liz Mantle, and I'm a resident of Hawthorne. And good evening to the council, Mr. Mayor.[1713.78] And good evening to the council, Mr. Mayor. I've never been here, never done anything like this before. I'm here to ask if you could please reconsider banning gas leaf blowers. I brought in some information which you had mentioned to bring in, and I'm hoping that you'll read through it and reconsider it. There are so many towns, cities and towns in this area that are banning them. El Segundo is not right now, but they're looking into it. So I'm hoping that you will do the same. It's so dangerous for the health, for everybody's health, for the environment, and the list goes on. So that's why I'm here, and I don't know who to give this to, or, but I'm hoping you'll reconsider it, and that's it.
Ma'am, and we did, I did inform you what the result was from the last meeting, right?
That you're not going to enforce it.
Because of the specific, there's more that I told you, but yeah.
Well, yeah, because you don't know how to enforce it. So I brought, or you can't, so I would suggest doing more research. I brought some information in from other towns that are enforcing it, and, you know, it just needs to be done. There's also something here that you can get a rebate if you bring in your gas leaf blower. So all these landscapers who are, you know, not happy about using electric leaf blowers can get rebates.
Thank you, ma'am.
Purchase them, okay? So thanks.
Okay. Seeing no one else, I declare oral communications close ordered. All right, let's move on to the. This is, it appears that this is, oh, here you go. We might need to make copies of this, okay? We need copies of this eventually, okay, Liz?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think we only had like four. Did it, did you get, all right, thank you. All right. Yeah, city clerks, let's just move with that, and then I'll just bring up that discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have items, I have four items on the consent calendar. They're items two through five for your consideration and approval. I will be taking the votes for item three separately. Item two, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item four, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on Tuesday, February 11th, 2025's agenda. Item five, resolution number 8510, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, adopting an amended conflict of interest code containing revised designated positions and disclosure categories, and repealing all previously adopted conflict of interest codes for adoption.
To the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to go back to items number three, approval of city council meeting minutes.
That one is going to be separate.
Okay.
Did pull it purposely.
Okay.
Please vote. Yes, please vote. Um, yes.
I made a motion.
Second, please vote.
Please vote.
Enter the meeting, enter meeting.
The votes are in. The voter reflects mayor and council voting yes. For item three, I'm going to read this, and for the minutes of December 12th, 2023, everyone except Councilwoman Johnson should vote, and that's 12, 12, 23.
Second, please vote.
Mayor, sorry.
Yes.
I have, I had a question with regards to this item on the dates, the dates of the regular council meeting of December 12th. I don't remember, this says 2023, in 2023? I can't, I can't remember that. And then as far as January 9th, I don't remember having a meeting January 9th.
2024?
Right, on the 9th, January 9th?
Dates are off on this.
That's what I, I'm like, I don't remember a meeting on January 9th, and I don't remember a meeting on January 23rd. I'm looking at the calendar of our meetings, and from what I understand, our regular meeting was, we had one on the 7th, is that correct? 2025? Okay, well, unfortunately, I don't have that calendar, but I don't remember, I can't honestly remember these dates unless I have the calendar, that's what I'm saying. So I don't know if I want to abstain, or.
We're approving minutes from the beginning of last year?
Yes.
Yeah, I honestly can't, can't.
Clarif, point of clarification, why are we doing that?
Because we have to approve minutes. We have to, we had to get caught up on minutes. The minutes have been behind since before I got here, and so this is the first time we've actually gotten caught up, caught up on minutes. So now we're going back and approving the minutes, and if you all would like some time to think about that, we can actually table it, if that's okay with the city attorney, and we can come back to it, and so that everybody can have a chance to take a look.
Can I also ask that we bring a calendar for the years that we're looking at? There's a 2023 and a 2024.
Those meetings, those minutes should be attached to the, to the agenda.
Okay, we need to work on having these minutes done as most currently, because it's.
The minutes are current. These are minutes that you guys have to approve from, while we're getting caught up, and we're not including all of the minutes, we're just doing three, four at a time.
What I'm saying is that for us to recall what happened at those meetings, we need to have them as current as possible, so that we could recall most recently what happened, so that we could approve these things.
All of the minutes should be attached to the agenda.
I understand, but there's a different issue. We're going to get you the help that you need, or the resources, so that this could be done, okay?
The minutes are all caught up, we don't need any help.
Well, for this to have happened a year later, that's problematic for me, so, thank you.
So the item is tabled, is all we know?
We can table items.
Yes, why don't we table the item, so we could bring it back to the next meeting, so the council members would have an opportunity to review the videos from the meetings of these dates?
I appreciate that.
And it's always attached to the agenda, so you can always click on that and look at it.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Would you like additional minutes to be approved at the next meeting, or do you like the amount that's being presented to council for approval?
It's for us to sit down and, let's just do whatever we can, all of it, just give us the opportunity to review. Just knock it out. Please. All right, so are we finished with city clerk's consent calendar?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, if there's nobody opposed, well, first of all, I would like to bring up item 15 from the discussion action items, decorum code of conduct during council meetings from Mayor Protemp, can I do that, sir?
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking, if there's, especially since.
You could take it out of order.
This specific item solely for the, you know, sometimes we do it because there's a large audience here for specific item, but in this case, this applies to the city council. Go ahead, Mayor Protemp. Yeah, go ahead, Liz.
Thank you, Mayor. I, a couple of council meetings ago, Councilwoman Reyes English asked that we have a closed session regarding the decorum, and I met with our city attorney, and according to Code Section 54962, we cannot have it in a closed session. We actually have to discuss it here on the dais. The reason that I bought this issue up was because we have been unprofessional as a council, and I would like for us to put our best foot forward and respect each other, and respect each other's place on the council. And so I have asked the mayor if he could enforce the code of ethics. We do have the code of ethics that we abide by, but I'm going to defer the rest of this area to the mayor. Thank you.
No, no. We already have an existing decorum resolution, okay? We just need to remind ourselves that we need to conduct ourselves according to that, and that involves just common respect. I think I mentioned it before, debate the ideas, not the person, okay? The policies, not the person. And if we stick to that, I think we'll be safe. Even if you're passionate debating the idea, it won't go into that personal territory, and you start just going, and it starts looking really bad, and obvious to the community. I think we, we've all been guilty, remains to be seen, Councilwoman Johnson, but I think we've all been guilty of, you know, just crossing that line, fuzzy line, whatever, at some point. So we've all kind of been guilty of it, but just a quick reminder that we just need to stick to some decorum and respect for each other, which includes different things. Go ahead, you have some ideas on what kind of things?
Oh, I was, I was just going to say that our city attorney sent us over a legal confidential, and as a refresher, I would ask that my fellow council people just refer to that legal confidential as it regards to our code of conduct during our council meetings and also in closed session.
Yeah, so it includes several things, like maybe not talking over each other, interrupting, getting the floor by going through to the mayor. Just remember, even if I don't like something that's being said about something that I've brought forth, I'm going to give you the floor. I'm not going to like hold that, hold back from giving you the floor, just because I want to do something inappropriate and silency or something. That'll never happen on my end, and so therefore, we just don't interrupt each other, respect each other, and respect our ideas, and when the opportunities come, you know, try to debate the ideas when they come up in the appropriate sections, and not try to undermine each other's ideas. It's just good, looking out for the best, for the most, the most benefit for the residents of Hawthorne in our decisions, just a quick reminder, and that's it. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
To the chair, thank you. I think there was miscommunication with regards to what my request was. Since the code of conduct during council meetings, what I was asking was if we could carry that into closed session. That was my question back then. It wasn't necessarily to bring a legal confidential, it wasn't necessarily to bring items that we discussed in closed session as an, as an issue. It was basically trying to be uniformed with regards to council debates, that it happens not only on the dais, but it also happens in closed session. That was my request, but I do appreciate the legal confidential and other cities that have similar code of conduct ordinances, and I do appreciate the mayor's perspectives on how and when, obviously, our passion takes the best of us, and oftentimes, our passions are not their passions or my passions, but at the end of the day, we could, we could be adult about it and perform to the best of our abilities when it comes to not only professionalism, but making a debate that is worthwhile for all of us and to benefit the community. So thank you.
That's really pretty much it, guys. I think that's good. Let's not beat it to death and just, okay? Thank you, guys. You good? Councilmember, you good with that? Ma'am? Okay, good. Oh, and then just another thing that I just want to add to that, something I had like listed somewhere else, but I just don't have the paper, just, let's make sure we do whatever we can to prepare ourselves as council members, including myself, for the meetings by reading these books, you know, because we get them in a timely manner from our wonderful city clerk, so thank you, ma'am. So we get that information from you, so let's just try to review, see what's in there, ask as many questions previous to the meeting, so that when we're out here, we're able to just debate the ideas and policies and just come up with some good decisions. Then also, the other thing is, when we're talking up here and we're trying to express an idea on something, let's try to limit ourselves in the amount of time in which we express ourselves, try to make our points as succinctly as possible and efficiently as possible, because sometimes the more you talk, the more you, you know, you just, the more you actually kill the argument that you were trying to make, so, so, and so we can get through these meetings nice and swiftly. Oh, city clerk. You're doing a wonderful job, ma'am. Thank you. And I mean that, I mean that your departments do it, and that's the whole thing about the other thing is, we just make it happen, okay?
To the chair, just real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
Speaking on your, your last statement about the time, I think we as council, we do need to be respectful of the residents' time and of the directors' times that are sitting here, and sometimes what happens, and what I've, as a resident, what I saw in the complaints that I got, were, you know, council will get up and walk out, but you still have the directors sitting here, you still have the residents sitting here, and one, they want to hear both sides of the argument. And when certain people walk out a part of the argument, then they don't get to hear that individual's side of the argument, and so therefore, they, all they get to hear is the one side that's left behind. And going on and on, and everybody repeating themselves in, in the, the last part, when we do our little roundtable, people have been here all day, you know, some of the directors have been here all day, and residents are coming and spending their time. I think we just need to be more respectful of that.
Good, all right, thank you. Next, we have a public hearing, Madam Clerk.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing on the draft substantial amendment to the 2024-2025 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG and Home Investment Partnerships home programs. Recommended motion, staff recommends the city council, one, conduct a public hearing and receive comments on the draft substantial amendment to the 2024-2025 Action Plan for the Use of Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Funds. Two, adopt the amended 2024-2024 Action Plan and authorize the city manager or designee to submit the plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Three, authorize the city manager or designee to negotiate, execute, and amend contracts with subrecipients or professional service providers as necessary to implement the CDBG and home projects identified in the 2024-2025 Action Plan. Four, authorize the city manager or designee to negotiate, execute, and amend contracts with subrecipients or professional service providers as necessary to implement the CDBG and home projects identified in the 2024-2025 Action Plan. Five, authorize the city manager or designee to execute, amend, and submit to HUD all plans and documents necessary to administer the 2024-2025 CDBG and home programs.
Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this topic? If not, I'll declare the, you, you want, no, no, this is, that's over here, it'll come to us right now. If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed, so ordered. Discussion, go ahead.
Hello? I just wanted to ask our city manager, I know that we received the executive order to stop all funding, and I just wanted to double check, I think we got that it was paused, and I just wanted to double check with you, is it still pending, or are we able to give out these funds?
That's a great question, Mayor Protemp. I have staff available and a subject matter expert from LDM. Not sure who wants to take that question.
Sure, I'll take that question. Kimberly Mack, Director of Housing. That executive order has been paused right now. We are allowed to spend funding as it has been awarded.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, ma'am. We have general matters. Madam Clerk, item seven, please.
Item seven, year in review, December 2023, 2024, in the city of Hawthorne, communication initiative.
Good evening. I will be leading this presentation with the help of Eric Chavez from our media department. I think this is a great information piece that we're going to share tonight. We're going to tag team the presentation. We also have leadership and representation from Tritripe and Smith. About a year and a half ago, my office aligned with Tritripe and Smith to help us in initiative to communicate with the public and communicate with staff. I know that's been asked from council, and currently, we're working forward to do that, so I thought it'd be a great time to indicate what we're doing from the city manager's office, and what we're doing from the media department regarding our social media platforms. So once we get the presentation up, we'll get started. And I'm Vaughn North, city manager for the city of Hawthorne. All right, as you see in front of you, we have the year in review, December 23, 2023 to 2024, and the partnership between Tritripe and Smith and the city of Hawthorne. Next page, please. On this page here, this is showing the scope of work that, that we're doing each month. Community Service Department, Kwanabwi, myself, and Eric Chavez, we have meetings with Tritripe and Smith, and we brainstorm different ideas and different initiatives that we have in the city, and we come up with a strategy to create those press release. So with the agreement that we have with Tritripe and Smith, we roll out two press releases a month, we get consultation on media relations, monthly media monitoring, which we're going to cover later in the presentation, those stats and metrics and data. And then lastly, we have our, we have two other items here, we have our monthly social media monitoring, and lastly, we have our monthly check-in and strategy. strategy calls that I mentioned earlier. We also, with the two written press release, these press releases are circulated internally and sent out to outside sources. And as you see on the right-hand side, you can see some of the items that we highlight in 2024, which include the Hawthorne Business Connect and Commercial Facade Programs, New Economic Development, Practice Steps in Addressing Homelessness, Following Executive Orders, Features of All the Variety of Exciting, put my glasses on maybe, of exciting community events throughout the year, Balanced Budget for 2024-2025 Fiscal Year. Thank you, Felice. And unveiling the new city logo that's right behind the mayor. Also, with Tripepe and Smith's help, we, all our Hawthorne-related media coverage is monitored via the metal water to stay abreast of all any relevant news. This allows the City of Hawthorne to effectively track the impact of our press releases. Through the press releases, the city has gained coverage in a, in a large range of local news networks with events being featured by Public CEO, the Hawthorne Press Tribute, the Los Angeles Signal, the Daily Breeze, Los Angeles Magazine, KTLA, Fox, NBC, Spectrum, News One, SoCal, City News Service. And as you see on this last slide, these are some of the highlights of the, the news sources that have picked us up. And with that, I'd like to turn over the presentation to Eric Chavez, that he's going to discuss our social media platforms and how we've grown as a city as far as getting the message out, what we're providing to our residents.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having me. Eric Chavez, I'm the production supervisor for the media department here for the city. And like Vaughn said, we do have a relationship with Tripepe Smith, where we have a monthly social media monitoring so we can see how we're doing with our social media and getting the information out to the public. We do have monthly social media reports that covers the city's Facebook, Instagram, X, and LinkedIn as of last year. The pages, and we dive into the audience growth, impressions, engagements, likes, comments, shares, saves, and story replies, and what are our top posts. Tripepe Smith works alongside our department, the media department, to identify the content that resonates most with the community across all platforms. Here are some of the numbers from 2023 and 2024, from December of 23 to December 24. As you can see, from December of 23 to December 24, the city has gained 3,167 followers across our entire social media platform. Facebook, 547 followers on Facebook, 2,129 on Instagram, 36 on X, which used to be Twitter, and 455 followers on LinkedIn. For a total, followers of 13,921 across our entire social media platform. The published posts increased 25%. Engagements increased by 45%. Impressions increased by 73%. And the video views increased by 82%. Instagram remains the most popular and interactive social media channel for the City of Hawthorne. On Facebook, the local event flyers, recaps of city events and business information is our biggest hits on that platform. All the flyers to all future city events that we have, we post them up with at least a month's notice, if not more, run it a few times throughout the, as we get closer to the event. Like we said, Instagram is our biggest follower, where we get a lot of interaction with residents. Video features are consistently among the top performer, top performing posts, such as the fraud alert from the Hawthorne Police Department that we recently had. Additionally, new business openings, such as the first cannabis retail, retailer inspired the high traffic. They actually, that, that one actually got 764 shares on that particular post. On X, high volumes of texts and insight into local updates were formed the best, emphasizing the platform's usefulness as a news sharing platform. LinkedIn, we've only had it about a year. It's actually in five days will be our one year anniversary that we started LinkedIn. We now have 764 followers as of right now. It's slowly growing. We don't post everything that we post on all our social media platforms. Some of the flyers and whatnot, we posted on Facebook and Instagram because more of the community follows this, follows those sites. This one's more businessy. Other cities follow this one. So, we kind of like to post the events that we have here. This is comparing Hawthorne to other South Bay cities that have around the same population. We are going to compare it with Redondo Beach, it has a population of 72,000 residents, and Carson with 96,000. Hawthorne is at 83,000. When taking into, when, when taking population size into account, Hawthorne has the best follower to population rate. Hawthorne has an 8% follower to population rate, where comparing to Carson is at 7.3%. And Redondo Beach has 4.25. The best way to increase follower count is to post consistently and tailor post to what best, performs best on each platform. The following slides show the most popular posts of the year for each platform. Engagement Across City Examples. The City of Hawthorne also sees a higher engagement rate and number of engagements than the City of Carson. For example, on their recent holiday community event post, Carson posts received 151 likes and Hawthorne received 198 likes. This demonstrates that the follower count does not always reflect on the higher engagements. In conclusion, Hawthorne consistently leads the pack when it comes to Instagram performance among South Bay cities. Additionally, Hawthorne is gaining followers rapidly on Instagram and consistently sees increased engagement from community members on the platform. Hawthorne's strong social media performance demonstrated across platforms, myself and our department target Hawthorne's social media content for strong performance across Facebook, X, and LinkedIn as well. And obviously, one of the big projects that we worked on with Tripepe Smith is the new City of Hawthorne logo. Hawthorne collaborated with Tripepe Smith to design a new city logo, which has been implemented across all city platforms. The new logo showcases Hawthorne's dedication to unity, progress, and community pride. It features iconic landmarks such as the water tower and airport, capturing the essence of Hawthorne's history and its influence in aviation. The design process involved extensive collaboration with diverse stakeholders, ensuring a comprehensive understanding of Hawthorne's identity and inspirations, aspirations. And this is just a last page showing our numbers, impressions. We have 1,290,000 impressions throughout our social media accounts. We have 73,000 plus engagements, which is a 44% rise. Post clicks, we have 17,514 people that clicked on our links on social media, which is 1,500% increase from the previous year. And the engagement rate went down a little bit, but we're going to be working on that. And that concludes this presentation.
And if I can add to that, Eric, let me, let me jump in really quick. Eric Chavez has been very important in our social media growth. He's posting on the weekends, late at night. With the recent fires that we had, we put emergency committee together. And if you noticed that we had updates on wind conditions, food drives, book drives, anything to do with assisting the public, Eric Chavez is behind that with the leadership of staff. So, I'd like to give Eric a big hand and say you're doing a good job and keep it up.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And also, we have Tripepe and Smith here with Jennifer Vaughn, which I met a few years ago. If you have any data questions or questions with other cities, they work with cities from south of the border, north of the border. So, if you have questions where we are as a city, how we can improve, and a roadmap to be successful, she's here to answer those questions if needed.
To the chair. Thank you so much, Eric. I really appreciate your hard work. I also want to say kudos to you and creating this Hawthorne newsletter. It is really incredible, and it's so amazing. And I'm so proud that we have this. Also, I wanted to ask you, do we post jobs? And do you see an uptick in engagement when we post jobs?
We do. Whenever we have job postings that are available, HR will send me those flyers that they create. We post them up, and there's a lot of shares and comments on those. So, yeah, we do.
And then the other question I have for you, I couldn't hear you. So, sorry if you have to repeat this. But what topic was the highest engagement when we, when we post?
Ribbon cuttings, videos, any, any video related, like events that we have, we do highlight videos of it and try to post it like that same day or by the following day. Those get the most traction.
Mayor Protemp, what we've done with LinkedIn the last year is go really heavy on retention and recruiting staff. So, any type of job recruitment we have, we make sure to place them on LinkedIn. That's a professional site. So, we've seen a better pool of applicants that have applied in the city.
Oh, that's awesome.
And then also on other platforms, we've done boosting. And maybe Eric can talk about boosting. But we boosted some of our events on Facebook and Instagram to attract others that might be outside the city limits because we are a good, City of Good Neighbors.
Yeah, we, boosting also helps to share with people that don't follow us. It's just going to pop up on their feeds, especially if we put the range, like I usually put around the 25-mile range from Hawthorne. So, those people in that area who do not follow the City of Hawthorne, it'll most likely pop up on their feed. And that's how we get people that don't follow us to hopefully start following us and come to the events.
Thank you so much. This is amazing, being able to spread our word to our surrounding cities and letting folk know what we're doing. I truly appreciate that because I'm definitely out in the community bragging about the things that we do. And it's nice to also have that with print and media that's going with that as well. I'm just curious about our newspapers. I noticed you have Fox and all of those folks that are doing our press releases as well?
So, Tripepe Smith is the ones that share our news and get it out to organizations. So, that's one of the main things that they do, try to spread our good news to spread amongst other organizations that, that probably wouldn't know about it.
And will that grow? Will we like reach out to other news organizations and other newspapers to share our story? Or this is kind of like the beginning, and as we grow, will, will reach out to more folks?
Jennifer, would you like to take that question, please?
Sure. Yeah. So, the Meltwater feature that we have is a media resource center that gives us access to all of the media in your region, but also it can do it by topic. So, depending on what news release we're featuring, we might pick somebody in Sacramento or Washington, DC versus somebody in the LA metro area based on the topic. Or if it's about, I know we featured a lot of the work that you're, the innovative work that your police department has done. So, if it's like law enforcement related or community events related for the unhoused, all the incredible, you guys do a ton of stuff. Every time we meet with the city, we are overwhelmed with the amount of content you have to provide. So, it really is a matter of narrowing down who we want to feature it to, and then establishing those relationships with the media to get the coverage.
The other question I had is, who is Meltwater?
Meltwater is a media resource that we use. Think of it as like a Google alert, but on steroids.
Thank you.
Sure.
To the chair. Vaughn and Eric, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Because a few years back, we didn't have no media, no, no communication to our side wall, behind these walls, right? So, I have to say, you know, thanks to the leadership of city manager and yourself, you know, you guys have done a tremendous work. And I want to thank the Thrifty also to come on board. Because we always keep saying we need to promote what the city has been doing and was going to do, and to show the residents that we are, we are here to serve them. And you guys have demonstrated, based on the statistics you just gave us, it's a tremendous impact that in just, in one year. Okay? Just in one year. So, so I'm looking forward for the upcoming, you know, year, you know, '25, '26, because I think this is the, we go in the right direction. Because this is what we need to do, to, to show the people of Hawthorne and the world what the good things we're doing here. Like you said, we have a lot of different programs going on every year, innovative programs that, like I said, we have one at the best police department. Now, like I said, we have one at the best communication department. So, thank you, thank you again, because you guys have done outstanding and have surplus my expectation. So, thank you very much.
That's why, if you heard me, I said media department. We're changing it from cable to media because we don't just do the TV portion. We do social media, newsletters, and hoping to grow. As you can see, this is our first hybrid meeting. This is the first time we ever had. Someone that's not in our council chambers, being able to talk to you guys, you guys communicating back, sharing presentations. So...
That is awesome.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
To the chair. Thank you. Appreciate all that you're doing, Eric. You're all over the place, literally. And you're right, Councilmember Montero, we haven't had any eyes on us in years because, you know, there was never a supervisor, let alone someone to, to do that work. So, it's good to know that we're being noticed, especially for those constituents that are out there wanting more information on what the city does and exactly how the city council works, right? I follow you. I also comment when I see constituents making comments that either favor or not favor on, on any one item. I'm just curious if there's someone that, that does that as well from your department and responds back. The main concern, and I do take a snapshot of it so that I could refer it over to Vaughn, especially folks that are saying that they weren't aware of an event or something taking place. And I always suggest, you know, make sure to follow the City of Hawthorne. Make sure to, you know, include your email address. I don't know if there's something on our website that provides someone that's interested in subscribing to Hawthorne, to basically provide their information, more importantly, their email address, so that they could stay on top of things. I definitely want to make sure residents are aware and informed. So, I know you guys are pushing and doing everything you can on that. And then with regards to press releases, this is something that we, I don't think have ever really done. I remember back in the day, and maybe mayor remembers, at one point, we were told that not to speak to the press, right? And that was just, you know, a different time. And so, I really, I'm really proud of how we've come up since those years and have really shown a light on Hawthorne to not make it look what it, you know, what it used to be. And really, there was no, there was no focus on the good that Hawthorne was providing. And I think with new leadership that we've had in, in the years, things have, have, are more up to date and are, are more, you know, streamlined social media and that, like everything else is, right? And it's true, the more you post, the more information you're able to share. And when you don't post, you obviously have a decline of, of those folks. And I get that all the time, too. But really, I think just everything that we're doing with regards to worldly translation, you know, more community input, more participation in the community, all of this is important. And that's something that I want to stay focused with with regards to communication. Communication is important, not just in our press releases, in our social media aspects, but trying to get and gain more community engagement. And, and I think I saw more of that also during the fires. And I don't think we've really had as much information as those times. And it's very unfortunate that it came during those times. And another thing was the miscommunication that was coming out of LA County and all those alerts that we were receiving that were not factual, right? So, we want to avoid that. And how better than to put the correct information, but through our social media? So, that was important. And I was following that from afar. And I was, you know, constantly sending Vaughn information and, you know, just piggybacking off of all of that. So, for all that you do and all the work that you've been doing for years, it's good to see that you're here today, giving a giving a presentation and providing a lot to us and with regards to our partner. I think press releases are good and I think press releases are necessary because it keeps the community informed. And if we need to make it, you know, even more public, I would suggest those press releases be printed out when they are put out into the press and placed at every public counter that we have, whether it's the lobby, public, our public library, our Wreckin' Parks Department and the Police Department. Because the only way we're gonna be able to share what's done in press release is also to share it among those that are not engaged in those types of newspapers. Okay, so thank you.
Let, let me try to answer some of your questions. We do try to promote all our social media sites at all the events that we go to. Whether it's here to take a bottled water, if you, a free bottled water, if you sign up to our social medias or whatnot. So anything to try to entice them to, to follow. I do try to respond to some of the questions on social media. We do get a lot of private messages and I try to direct them to the right departments or call the right number. All the information that I post up comes from all our staff, from all the departments. They give me all the information. If I don't know the answer, I will try, I would call each department and try to find out so I could respond to the people. I know you had a few other questions, but that's all I could remember right now.
Our press releases are also put out in the community at our public counters, you know, for visual purposes. And oftentimes, folks don't have those newspapers that are being sent to. I mean, just to get the newspaper fairly times, you have to be a member, right? You gotta pay for subscription, I think even for Daily Breeze. It's easier for me to just find it, right, accessibly in the public. So thank you for that.
Also, all our business cards have our Linktree information in the back and it has all our, all our social media sites. Anyway, the 311 app, anything that's Hawthorne related, it's on, on the QR code that's on all our business cards. I just wanted to thank our department too, like everyone in our office.
No, the QR codes are.
I don't do it myself, it's, it's everybody.
That's good. Thank you.
Eric, thank you so much for, you know, leading the charge on this. Along with the council members here have seen you in action and just how we've evolved rapidly. I think it's a great thing. And just to see that the community involvement, that they're keeping track, that they're signing up and taking a look at things, it's, it's good. You know, it's definitely making us offer the services that our community members need, you know, because we need to make sure that they're taken care of. One thing that we need to recognize, everyone, is that we're working, we're still a work, even though the home prices are like nice out of, out of the roof, we're still a working class community. And, you know, some other neighborhoods, you got stay at home people, working from home and all fancy money pouring out of their noses and stuff. But here, we have to go to work every day, you know, even I have to go to work in the day, in the day, in the evening, just to make ends meet, right? So by doing what you're doing, trying to make it as easy as possible and the information as accessible as possible is just a great thing. And so I applaud you for that. This, this whole, this new thing right here with the, the video, the Zoom type of communication. I think it's a great idea, but I think it should just be used very, very rarely. You know, when somebody is in emergency, this can't be used when a developer is off vacation in Greece on a yacht trying to make a case for a, for a project or something, you know, or, you know, somebody, you know what, I forgot that I had the meeting. So this is, this is the only way, no. Because we still need to hold those people who want to advocate for something on their behalf, they need to make the effort and show up. But I think it's great that we have it and just in case of those emergencies that we have. So this is, this is not like, you know, I mean.
We're on yachts. I want to be on a yacht.
No, I mean, yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah. And we, and we can't use this for us if we're like off on vacation, we just want to participate in the, there's probably rules about that, right? So, Mr. City Attorney, right? Okay. But thank you. Kudos. Thank you so much.
To the chair. To the chair.
Yes, yes.
You missed me, but that's okay. Thank you, Eric, for all that you do. And even with this presentation, I know we talked about it because there are instances when information needs to be passed and the, and the party is not local. I do agree with the mayor that it shouldn't be something that we're making decisions off of. But if it's just strictly information, this is very good. It's very helpful. And while I love our neighboring cities, I also love when we beat them. And, because I, I believe in Hawthorne first and I, I personally, and I know a lot of other people would agree with me on this, we want to be the benchmark. We want to be that destination city. And so thank you so much for helping us get there like 90 miles an hour. That's really nice. And my daughter Gabby has drug me kicking and screaming to all the social media and Instagram and all that. And she's done a very good job. So making me accountable to, to be on these platforms so that I can be more informed about what's going on in the city too. So thank you for that. And again, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Let's give him a big round of applause. I'll make a motion to accept his report. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, if you could read item eight through 12, but I'm going to be pulling 12 out.
Okay, perfect. Item eight, City of Hawthorne's investment report for the quarter ending December 1st, 2024. Item nine, approval of agreement with Tripeppy Smith to provide general communication support services. Item 10, distribution of a community survey. Item 11, Hawthorne Police Department Roof Replacement Project, project number 25-09, out to bid. Item 12, telehealth committee report. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent. Calendar may have a motion to approve items eight through 11.
I'll move.
Second. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you. Discussion on my part on item 12, who's, who would be the person that's coming up to respond from staff? Would it be you, Mr. City Manager?
I can start with the questions, but I'd like to have maybe our committee, our committee chair assist in additional questions if needed.
And so since I was the initiator of this thing through a discussion and the council joined me and said, hey, you know, let's take a look at it. I just thought it would be good to be able to have a committee to be able to just come up with some targets, some definite scheduling and some, just the logistics for the telehealth van to be able to operate within our city so that we can have some measurable, deliverable points and things that we could look at with regularity. It's not just sporadic. You might find them here, et cetera. So we just have more definition on these things, right?
Yes, absolutely. So after direction at the last council meeting, we swiftly put a committee together the next day, actually. That included myself, Housing Director Kimberly Mack, Community Service Manager Kwanah Buie, Homeless Service Supervisor Dosse Medina and Chantel Dixon from Licensing. With that, we came up with some recommendations for council and I'm excited that you pulled this item for discussion. With that being said, I'll call Kimberly Mack up, took over some of the highlights of our, our meeting.
Kimberly, thank you.
Good evening. So the meeting was broken down into two parts. The first part of the meeting, we had the opportunity to meet with the telehealth vendors. And they gave us a brief overview of how the program was ran, how they counted their metrics, who they assisted, what they considered as Hawthorne residents and where they currently park their van. We asked our questions. And in the second half of the meeting, dealt with us brainstorming on ways to make their program better within, for the City of Hawthorne residents. That included us trying to determine what our definition of Hawthorne resident was residency as well as how long an individual should be assisted, whether it would be immediate care or would it follow through to long, long-term care, as well as also where the van is parked on different days. They have a fleet of two vans within the City of Hawthorne. And whether it served the city to have both vans or if we just have the one van so that they can stay within the city longer, given the limited budget that they have left on their agreement with the City of Hawthorne. We also tried to speak with them about their metrics and how they accounted for their reporting practices and the need to have more detailed information and to collect all information for either walk-ups or appointments that they had within the City of Hawthorne. And we just tried to come up with ways to see what information we could actually receive from them versus information that was considered confidential. The initial meeting was just that, gathering information from them and seeing what we actually need. It was a great fundamental start or foundational start, but we do need to have additional meetings to see how they can move forward with the limited funding that they have, which is expected to end estimated by June of 2025.
Kimberly, thank you so much for mentioning that. And I do understand that it's an ongoing process of meetings, a series of meetings to get to that point in which we define things for them. I did talk to Mr. Rambo and expressed to him that this was purpose, purpose, purposeful on my part in order to make the, make telehealth a success and just to meet some of the goals that we had. So by giving them definition and expectations, then, you know, there's things that we can look at and things that we can vouch for and understand. And there's just accountability aspect and just put some of the residents' concerns or false understandings to rest.
Thank you. Staff is seeking direction on how you elect for us to move forward as far as the committee is concerned with additional meetings regarding the telehealth project.
But have you come up with that scheduling? Have you come up with the things? Do you have some type of report as to that? Or do you, can you still develop that in a, in an additional meeting?
So we have already come up with a calendar, a suggested calendar for both vans. And they have attached a new program that should be a part of your agenda this evening as a consideration for you all.
We'll take a look at this, but if you could also maybe just even go into slightly more depth for, for maybe the next meeting that we have, if you guys could come up with future meetings and just set the goals for those, and just some deliverables besides this, though.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Kimberly. I just want to make some history noted for, you know, for record's sake. Telehealth was initially implemented and brought into the council to address our homeless issues. Homeless issues that were obviously out of control and we were getting inundated with calls from constituents and businesses alike. So the initial request to telehealth was to provide outreach services to address not only the homeless issues, but they had the capabilities to address the mental health and behavioral health services on top of that. So from my understanding, their role then changed after it was implemented. Am I correct to say that, Vaughn?
Yes, you are.
Okay. What additional things were added to their role that was included? From my understanding, there would have to have been a revised contract, right, to include additional added services?
According to the presentation tonight?
Yeah.
Yes, if council accepted, I would have to make that in line with his current agreement once we get direction from council.
Yeah. I want that to be, you know, put for the record. Because initially, again, and how long have they been working with us now? I, I think it's over four years?
2022.
Okay, so roughly. That was the whole purpose for telehealth because it's not something that was being done in any other city. It was brought to the City of Hawthorne exclusively for our area. And then through other communities and including LA County had eyes on us and what we were doing to, to address the homeless issue on top of that, behavioral health and, and mental health. And then obviously, Councilmember Montero, myself and other committee members from department heads implemented the tiny homes for addressing the, the homeless issue and to get them services immediately, which obviously, we've been very successful with that. And it's my understanding that telehealth van goes out to the location of our pellet shelter housing and provides those services in private to those residents. And in doing so, we're able to move not only the issues that I just made mention, but to push along individuals to do better with regards to receiving services versus not, to receiving medical assistance, including psychological psychiatrists, clinicians, whatever service they need. And on top of that, the van has been able to implement documents that are missing, which include licenses or ID cards that are missing to include onsite applying for insurance, which in other words, they wouldn't have through the American, you know, I want, I want to call it the California, what is it, California, covered California, that's what I, thank you. So I think we need to include all of this when you're talking about a committee and you're wanting to talk about, and I noted, targets, scheduling, measurable deliverables. So I want to make sure that we're not setting someone up because I've never seen a nonprofit organization, eyes on an organization such as this, let alone making them go through hurdles to address the issues that we have been discussing and have been making strives on. So I just want to make that known for the record because I wasn't here at the last council meeting. And with all fairness, we need to include everything that they're doing because initially, that was not their job. And I want that noted. And as far as I'm concerned, they've been working very hard with our police department, with Dulce at our homeless intake center, with other organizations, again. The idea of helping those that need help are folks that are probably passing through, are probably folks that without the assistance of the City of Hawthorne would have no hope. So I just want to make sure that whatever committee is formed, whatever outcomes come, that everything is put on the table that they're having to do because of the added work that was put, put on them through council directives here on the dais. So I appreciate that and I appreciate telehealth. And I hope that folks can take a bigger look at what they're doing because there's nothing like it in other communities. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank Councilwoman Ray English. And I, I want to just emphasize some of the points you made. They're doing such a great job. And to that effect, they've been servicing other members of the, they've even serviced some members in, in the Holly Glen neighborhood that needed some mental health assistance because they're going through crisis. They took care of somebody over there and their family and got, what do you call it, those gift cards to the supermarket because they didn't have the resources. So I, I fully agree with that. So just that they've been a target of criticism by some members of our, not everybody, just a few members. And I just, and I did talk to Mr. Rambo, like as I mentioned, and, you know, he, he understood and there was nothing and he agreed, you know, that's good. This is a good thing. This is a positive thing. Just something that's good to help him, help this thing shine even more. So, thank you.
To the chair.
Sir.
Thank you. Actually, this is a very good conversation, very positively. Because, yes, 2022, when we brought telehealth and it was through the federal funding money to the hopper, you know, the COVID money, right? And, and we know, like Ms. Kimberly Mack just said, June 2025 is coming, right? So this means they only have, we only have contact with them for four more months. And then we have to figure it out what's going to happen after that. Because, you know, we know mental health is very important, special. Community and for the whole community at large, because we have a lack of mental health service all around the county. And there is not enough mental health clinicians there to provide service. So it's something that, you know, LA County supposed to be in charge of health and mental health for all the 88 cities in LA County. But they lack of a lot of resources. So for us, I, I believe soon we're going to be talking about the budget 25, 26. And we have to figure it out where we're going to get money, maybe to continue telehealth van on a limit contract or per day contract because we still have the homeless issues, right? We still have the tiny homes and we need to address those. So we have to start thinking. So we have to start thinking about thing big because this is going to come for our budget that is going to be, uh, approved before July first. So we need to figure it out where the money is going to come from. Uh, we're going to maybe get money from the CDBG or from the home fund, uh, from the federal government because federal government is limit all the money from us coming, uh, to, to, to the cities. So especially with the new administration in Washington. So we have to make sure, um, that we have to have a truly conversation, how we're going to continue to provide these services.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I make a motion to accept the report. Please vote.
Councilman English. The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay. Next we have city council discussion action items. Mayor Pro Tem, thirteen.
Thank you, mayor. So I have been, um, in the community and I've attended other, uh, cities town hall. And because of that, I was inspired to bring it back to our council asking if my colleagues would be okay if we hosted a town hall, um, to focus on, let me see. Um, a town hall meeting with local state and federal officials that would discuss legislation that would be affecting our residents. And so I'm asking my colleagues if I can have permission to host a town hall for the city of Hawthorne residents.
Oh, I think this is a great, okay, can I give you my feedback?
Yes, sir.
She's all like, what's he gonna say? I think this is a great idea. Um, I definitely want to make sure, I want to make sure that it's a city of Hawthorne event, but it'd be great if you could moderate it.
Absolutely.
If you could moderate it, that'd be great, but you know, just having us all there and, you know, just participating, that'd be great too, just.
I had planned to have our city manager ma- moderate it.
Whichever, I mean, I thought it, well, that's what my initial thought was, but if you defer to him, that's fine. Okay?
Thank you.
I think it's good.
To the chair, are we going to be able to get, uh, Congressman Waters?
Well, I wanted to get permission first before I reached out to our, um, state officials because I didn't want them to get to say yes and then you guys say no. So I just wanted to get permission first.
Um, I was thinking about this and, uh, first question is like when and what are, there's just a plethora of different topics. Do you, you know, can we focus on, do you have specific areas you were focused?
So what, once I get permission, I'm going to reach out to each person and request that they give me three dates so that I can get the majority of folk to come. And then once I get that, we can discuss if you guys have some specific areas that you want to discuss. But I really was going to ask them to talk about the things that affect us, the city of Hawthorne. What they're doing, like our congresswoman, she is always here, um, in our community and doing so many things for us, like she gave us money for some of our projects. And she can talk about maybe the funding that we will or will not be able to get. And I know our, our assemblywoman, our supervisor, all of those folks give us money. And so they'll be able to speak to what they will be able to do with this budget and what they won't be able to do with this budget. So I kind of wanted to give them the room to kind of talk about the things that will impact us as a community. Um, but if there's something specific that you want us to ask them to talk about, I can put together something, um, as well for that.
Any comments?
I conca.
Conquer? All right, good. Excellent. Any?
And.
I think we got a comment over there.
To the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I think outstanding idea. Um, I think having some direction would help because if you don't, we're going to be talking about the post office to the border, to everything that we need to be more specific about what we want in our community. It could be, it could get ugly and I don't think that's your intention, but it could get out of hand.
No, I've been in, um, meetings with those people and they're very professional in regards to, uh, what they talk about. And so when I am giving them product, uh, direction in terms of what are the things that will impact our community, especially the funding? We have a lot of projects that we already have, um, in process, but yet we also have projects that we want to bring to the city in the coming future. So just knowing whether we can go and get those dollars or if those dollars won't be available, I think is a very important question. But I would want to defer to the city manager to see if he's okay with being a moderator, uh, for this event.
Absolutely. Uh, I just want to, uh, to her point, uh, or maybe not exactly to her point, it's a, a town hall implies that there's an open forum too. That's the part that we need to define what the areas of, uh,
Oh, absolutely. That's why I'm gonna work with the city manager and to make sure that, you know, we have a open forum that.
That's the, yeah, that's, those are, that's.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We're gonna make sure that we have a good time and that if folks, um, you know, become disrespectful and out of hand, we're gonna use this code of conduct that we talked about, make sure that it's enforced at that town hall meeting as well.
Awesome.
The chair.
Sir.
I would also recommend for our city attorney to, to protect it, maybe because he knows all about the laws and, uh, and what funding that should be coming, you know, especially with the federal funding, you know, through the housing, through the infrastructure, all of those kinds of stuff that, uh, potentially might gonna be cut or reduced or, you know, especially, you know, the administrative costs, all those kinds of things. So, uh, Mr. Kim, you, you be involved, please.
So Alex, are you saying he should be part of the panel discussion? Or you're saying like both of them be the moderators and they're like going back and forth?
They can be both moderators and he can be there as a legal advice to our city.
Thank you, Councilman Montero.
To the chair.
Yeah.
That's what I was talking about. I wasn't talking about, um, our representatives being out of control. Uh, I could see, because I was at the post office when that went on and that went on for hours and hours and it was, it became a, you're not doing this and you're not doing that. And I'm sure our representatives don't want to sit through that.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll make sure that we take all precautions to make sure that it will run smoothly because I definitely cannot guarantee that folks are not going to get out there and say some things that they shouldn't say or act, um, indignant. So we'll make sure that we, at the town hall, um, set ground rules, but also we'll have our police department, our wonderful police department, um, on staff in case we, folks need to be removed. Um, and, uh, it'd be a great opportunity for our city, uh, attorney to give warnings as well.
He does it here all the time.
And, and to the chair, and actually, believe it or not, uh, you talk about, yes, our police department be there because you might have some outside people protesting, you know what I mean, with ban and stuff, so be prepared for that too.
Good. Thank you. Wonderful.
So can I give a, um, directive to the city manager? To, um, us to work together to get those dates? And also that you will be the moderator or one of the moderators and we'll have, um, our city attorney as part of the panel discussion.
Noted.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
For sure.
Everyone.
Uh, item number fourteen, that's my item. So, uh, all right, so I think, do you guys have like the list of thing, the positions? All right. All right, folks.
Looking for mine. Oh, okay. You got good eyes. Okay.
So here, I just don't want to be looking at this thing, but. Yeah, we'll do, we'll do it like coordinated like we said, but I still have this thing here. All right, guys, um, thank you guys all for being here today. The mayor pro tem's position is very important. It's, uh, sometimes I can't attend events and the mayor pro tem represents me. So it's a direct representation of me, the city. So I really appreciate the jobs that, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Manning has been doing. Preceding her was, uh, the mayor pro tem, Angie Reyes English. And, uh, so we need to, uh, move forward and determine who the next mayor pro tem is. And, uh, I would like to nominate, uh, councilmember Montero to be the mayor pro tem, starting on the first meeting in April. The first meeting in April. And the reason I'm making that, that purposely, uh, like in April, we're used to doing it in January. But, um, mayor, uh, councilwoman Angie Reyes English was able to serve, uh, two or three extra months because we didn't take action in, in January. That's no problem, right? But we also want to make it fair to, uh, councilwoman of mayor pro tem Manning to be able to serve a full, full year so she can, you know, just be out there, you know, representing us and, uh, attending things with the title, you know? She deserves, she deserves it. She, and, uh, it's, it's, I think it's what we have even in our ordinance, so. Starting on the first meeting in April, uh, councilmember Montero, would you be able to accept the one-year term? To the next meeting in the following year?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll make a second.
Okay, thank you. Please vote on that. Alex?
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. So in the first meeting, uh, all the way up to the day before. So at twelve midnight, you can change your Facebook and Instagram designation to mayor pro tem on that day. Is that cool? Thank you, guys. So what, what would end up happening? Okay, so just keep in mind that, uh, if, I don't know, if somebody here carries the mayor pro tem title through an election and for some reason they weren't to be reelected and whatever, you know, for whatever reason, it'd be nice if we could just start the, the, calling the mayor pro tem in the sec- first or second meeting in January, just so we can be aligned with what our original intention is. Is that a good understanding? All right, cool. All right, so we have the, all right. So we have a change in, uh, membership on the council by one person. And so, uh, councilmember David Patterson is no longer with us and there were some roles that he was, uh, that he was, uh, in. So I think it'd just be appropriate if, uh, our city manager could go take us through each of the committees that we have and just tell us who the person that was in charge. I don't want to, I don't want to bias this already, but you know, a lot of people here want to just do, uh, carry some of the same roles that they had before. And it simplest thing would be that, uh, councilwoman Faye Johnson would, uh, fill in the roles that, the, that, uh, David Patterson was in.
To the chair, um, can we, before we begin with that process, can you take a look at this list and make sure that we're not missing anything? Because our office always comes up with this list and it, it always, we always miss something.
Aren't we, Lawa is not on here that we?
Looks like it.
I don't see Lawa on here.
Before we go through them, right?
Okay, so I'm going through the list, um, city attorney.
Yes.
And I, I also provided that, um, to the mayor. But, um, you're absolutely right. Can I just give you the titles of what I have and then we could go through that? Is that okay?
Let's just, let's go through that before we even start talking about it.
Yeah, the titles of the committees.
And I'll check them off.
Okay, let's do that first. So the title of the committee, Centinella Youth Services. Um, the next one are City Select Committee, which is the ad hoc for League of California Cities.
City Select Committee?
It's League of Ca- let's just say League of California Cities. Okay, League of California Cities.
It's on there.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have League of California Cities City Selection Committee on the list.
Correct. Right, it, it falls under Cal- League of California Cities. The, the next one is the County Sanitation District Number Five.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm just again reading to make sure we're, nothing's missing. The next one is Independent Cities Association.
Here.
The next one is Independent Cities Risk Management Authority.
It's here.
Okay, the next one would be, uh, Independent Cities Association, which is ICA.
I thought you mentioned that one already.
That was, that was, that was, um, yes, okay, okay. What I did was I took a picture and then you know how that goes.
Okay, got it, got it.
Okay, so we, you confused me now. Okay, so we have the Risk Management Authority, right? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we have the League of California Cities Los Angeles County Division. We have the League of California Cities Revenue Taxation Policy Committee. Right?
Yes, it's here.
Okay, and then we have, uh, Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Clean Power Alliance of Southern California Board of Directors. Uh, we also have MTA Metro, which is the South Bay City Council, uh, Service Council.
Wait, do we see?
But, but this one needs to be scratched because, uh, it's an appointed, uh, position given through South Bay Council of Governments. Right, by the cog. So that needs to be scratched. It's not something that we do.
Metro.
Jackie Bakarak. It's through, it's through Jackie Bakarak.
Okay, so it's not, it's not on the list.
Yeah, okay, okay. I just want to make sure, again, just reading our committee titles. South Bay Cities Council of Governments Board of Directors. Okay. And then, um, I have South Bay Regional Communications Authority Board of Directors, which is our call center here. And then the other I have is Southern California Association of Governments, which is SCAG Executive Committee. And then we have the Southern California Cities, uh, Cities Consortium, which is this, uh, JPA. Right? And then I don't remember seeing this, but I, I, I do have committee members on it. So West Basin Water Association Board of Directors and Patterson was the alternate in that. So that's the committee assignments, um.
Okay, I see two that we, that you didn't see. That's, is that from the, is that from the, uh, from the website?
Yeah, no, that's from what we were provided as council members. Not recent. I'm talking, I'm, I'm talking some time ago.
Okay, so KHHR Committees Network Committee was in, uh, wasn't mentioned? And I don't know if it's in the assignments. Do you see that, Mr., uh, Mr. Norris?
What does that stand for? What is K A H R stand?
That's the airport.
Yeah, that's the airport.
Oh, okay, okay. You see, that's a new committee that we were just assigned, which is Katrina and myself. And when we, when we fill these out next time, can we please fill out the full name of, uh, what that means?
No, the KHHR's designation is like LAX.
I know, but.
LAX doesn't have a.
We just need to make sure we, we spell it all out. We're not guessing. But that's Katrina and myself, um. The vector control, that's the mayor, isn't it? Oh, no, that was, uh, Valentine, I believe that was on that.
That gets called rarely.
Yeah.
And I wish I could ask, but, you know, it gets called rare, rarely.
So just to go over the, one, the one organization that we missed on the list was Centinella Youth Service.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's the, so West Vector Control gets called every month, so we have to have the dates.
I don't have any dates.
So let's press, then there's the City Finance Advisory Committee. The city, yeah, just, is that something we still have active?
Yes, we do. Um, Mr. Councilmember David Patterson was the chair for that.
So I'm gonna do this in careful coordination with our city manager. Mr. City Manager, uh, if you could name the, the, try to find the. try to find the information for the City Finance Advisory and just go down, and just tell us what days it meets so that we could also, we can't volunteer for something, we won't be able to attend, right?
Absolutely.
Things have changed or whatever, right? Just confirm it, so go ahead with the city fin, the first one.
Felice, can you help me with that meeting, uh, due to us not having, uh, a council member? When will be the next meeting for the Financial Advisory Committee?
Uh, that meeting would be the first Monday of, or the, the second Monday of March, right before the, the next meeting, on the tenth, March tenth.
So like a five or four?
So second Monday.
What time?
Um, we meet in, in March and then December. So it'd be the, the Monday before that first meeting in December.
What time?
Uh, it's during the day, so it's at eleven o'clock in the morning.
So, can you tell us who the members are then? Who's, who's on there right now?
Well, it's just, uh, as far as electeds, it's just, was Councilmember Patterson, myself, uh, someone from the City Attorney's Office, Police Department, uh, HEG, HMEA.
So I don't wanna volunteer anybody, is there any volunteer?
I'll do it.
Okay, so we're gonna put your, I wanna put the number one under your name.
I don't remember seeing a delegate, it was always just him. I don't remember seeing a delegate, it was always just him.
No, no, we just gotta put, whoever's it gonna be the prime?
They were asking.
There was no delegate, uh, in the past.
What do you mean?
There was no secondary person or backup.
Oh, no alternate. So you're it, basically, that's what they're trying to tell me.
So we just need one, uh, we just, so we have, uh, Councilmember Johnson as the committee chair.
Okay.
Oops.
First.
City Finance Advisory Committee.
Because that's what I think David was there before he became a councilmember, because he was the city treasurer.
I think we need a representative from here, and absolutely, I think she needs to be in some of our committees. Is that allowed?
I, I don't recall whether, this is before my appointment, I don't know whether there was, I, I don't know if there was a resolution pursuant to a committee and whether they designated specific positions for the committee or not. I would have to check back on that, but I, I'll keep that noted, um, I know that the City Attorney was part of the committee and I don't see any reason for that right now, so.
So then you could swap out with her, and, uh, it's an, it's, it's more of an ad hoc committee.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, it was an ad hoc committee, it was not, uh, it was no.
I don't remember.
Because of his position as a city treasurer that time.
So we're, we're gonna have the Council, Councilwoman Faye Johnson and, and City Treasurer Point Dexter, are you okay with that? Cause it doesn't look like you want to. About joining this? There we go, see, wow. So I'm gonna put number one for her and then, uh, MP over here. For MP for Point Express. In, go ahead, next one, Independent Cities?
Independent City Association, we have Delegate, um, Mayor Alex Vargas, Alternate Katrina Manning, Mayor Pro Tem.
What is the desire of the council for my, I'm gonna remain the, the prime?
Yes, Delegate has to be the mayor.
Yeah, well, yeah, I enjoy those conferences, we come back with a lot of information. Who would like to be the alternate?
I can stay alternate.
I did, I, 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 I think this has been changed so many times, cause we, we, you were the delegate and I was the alternate, and then, uh, I, I don't know what it is.
Let me, let me, can I, can I just make a, before we even finalize this one? I just wanna, what's going on over there? The way I did it? We just need to know that, um, that there's, any member, that's a member of these committees, the city will pay for you to attend the meetings, whether it's here, uh, across the town or up north or over here, et cetera. That, the cost for attending these events, you will be guaranteed that as the, as a delegate, right? Um, your conference, uh, stipend is separate. It will not be, you will not be docked, uh, for your, uh, conference stipend if you're a member of this, just so you know. Okay? And what's the, uh, are we at three thousand for the conference stipends, sir?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Just as a clarification, so who would like to be the alternate for Independent Cities Association?
I just said I would.
Okay. Sorry about that, gee.
And I'll be the, I'll be an alternate to the alternate, how's that?
Well, you can always go.
Right.
So if we just keep the, the delegate and alternate?
Yeah, just to note it.
Okay, so you're getting up with it?
You, right.
Unofficial, let's do it unofficially, is that it?
Yep, that's fine.
That's cool.
For the next categories of, uh, Independent Cities Risk Management Authority, due to the sensitive nature or where we're at on that, we're, I'm strongly recommending that the council approve to have Assistant City Attorney David Casares as the Delegate and Risk Specialist Sam English from my office as the alternate.
Not related, that's fine.
So let's put a one, David, and then two, Sam English.
Right.
Thank you.
My one is my delegate and my two is an alternate. Next one?
Um, on my list here, we have, uh, League, Leagues of California Cities.
Where are the KHHR communities?
Well, I don't have that on my list, so I was gonna table that to the end.
I'd like to stay.
You asked me to go over my list, correct? Yes, yes, so this, this is my list, what, what I have.
Angie, don't you have to stay here to vice president?
So, uh, Mayor to the Chair, if we could just stay as is for the LAX, uh.
KHHR?
Yes.
What was it?
Which is myself and Katrina Manning.
So is there a prime?
No, that's just like that.
Okay, so one and one, right?
Yeah. Mind you, these are evening meetings that interrupt our dinner plans, but that's okay.
That's it, Mr. City Manager. Sorry to interrupt you, sir, feel so bad now.
Not a problem, so next on my list I have here is, uh, League of California Cities Revenue and Taxation Committee.
Okay.
De, uh, Delegate, David Patterson, Alternate, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Katrina Manning.
Wait, did you skip City Selection Committee in Los Angeles?
Let me, just go, don't worry.
No, they asked, he asked me to go over the list of appointees right now, not selections, I'm going over the list that was.
Oh, okay, got it.
From the past, and that's what I'm going off of too, cause I have my list here.
Okay.
Revenue and Taxation Committee.
Uh, David Patterson, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Katrina Manning is asked alternate.
I don't have a problem staying that, or did you?
When do they meet?
Uh, this committee meets the first Thursday of the month.
Day meeting or evening meeting?
Um, um, it says location and time to be announced. Uh, what we can do, once, if you're selected, we can call and verify the meeting times for this upcoming year.
Okay.
One and two, okay, we got it. Next?
What, what was one and two?
The Delegate is, uh.
Katrina.
The Delegate would be her and then you're the, the alternate, right?
Okay.
Just to keep in line.
Yeah, FJ and KM.
Next we have Los Angeles Community, Community Choice Energy Clean Power Alliance, we had Councilmember Alex Montero, Alternate, Angie Reyes English. They meet first Thursday of each month, location to be announced, time two P M.
Are we good with that still, guys? Okay.
I wanna go.
Number one and two. You're not restricted from going.
No, I'm saying, I wanna go away from the committee.
Oh, you, you don't wanna do it?
Yeah, yeah, I know, and it's like a five-hour meeting.
Can anybody else be an alternate?
I'll take the, I'll, I'll take it, but if there's a, okay, yeah, you do, you do go all the time. Thank you, bless your heart.
Okay, next, please?
Um, County Sanitation District Number Five, currently we have Delegate, Mayor Alex Vargas, Alternate, Councilmember Alex Montero.
Oh, could you? I'm not able to make it in the day.
Right, right.
Yeah, sounds good. Alex Vargas needs to be number one.
Who does?
And then Alex Montero will be number two, the, the alternate.
Councilmember Montero is as correct, third Wednesday of each month is the meeting day at Torrance City Hall, one thirty P M. Okay, South Bay Cities of Council of Governments Board of Directors, uh, currently we have Delegate, Alex, Alex Montero, uh, Alternate, Katrina Manning.
What's the desire of you guys? Okay. And what, the, with the alternate, do you wanna stay the alternate?
I, I'll stay the alternate.
Okay, so that's, South Bay Cog, number one is AM. Number two is KM. Alright, go ahead.
Next we have the South Bay Regional Public Communication Authority Board of Directors. Currently we have Delegate, Alex Marti, uh, Alex Montero, Alternate, Angie Reyes English.
Which one was this?
Uh, RCC.
Okay. And then ARE?
Yeah, that's fine.
Number two?
That's fine.
Alright, next, please?
Southern California Association of Government SCAG Executive Committee. Uh, Delegate, Alex Montero, Alternate, Angie Reyes English.
What do you guys think about that? Just remember, there's a lot of meetings.
No lie, and they're all downtown LA.
Um, meeting day, first Thursday of each month, nine A M, downtown LA.
Would you guys like to stay?
It's on Thursday.
First Thursday of each month.
So who would be the, the Delegate?
It's, it's council, it's Councilmember Montero, then myself.
So AM, number one, ARE, two. Next, please?
I'm glad we're going through this so that folks can see out there all the other meetings that we attend and how, what hour they're at. It's, it's good.
Okay, we have Southern California Cities Consortium, Consortium, JPA. Delegate is, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Katrina Manning, the alternate was former Councilmember David Patterson. They meet the second Monday of each month at twelve P M.
So who, so the Southern California Cities Consortium was David Patterson one?
No, other way around, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Manning was number one.
Is that something you want?
I wanna pass that.
So, so Councilmember, uh, Patterson was the second?
That's correct.
He's no longer here, so we're just intu-ting people.
I don't, I don't.
Um, sure.
You wanna be the prime?
No.
She's the second, Katrina's the prime.
Okay, who would be like the prime on this committee? Cities Consortium.
That's Katrina, Katrina's first.
She doesn't wanna do it, she wants to pass it.
Oh, you don't wanna do it, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, I thought you said. Oh, okay, so you're the prime, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, she's your first.
You'd be the prime?
She's first.
Second Monday of the month, twelve P M.
You wanna be the prime or the?
Well, I wanted to be the second, but if nobody can do it.
That's on Monday and it's twelve o'clock.
Keep it one without a, without a alternate. If there's an emergency, somebody will go, we'll figure it out.
You could always call on us to see who's available.
Next, please?
Uh, West Basin Water Association Board of Directors, uh, Delegate, Alex Montero, Alternate, Angie Reyes English. This committee meets the second Monday of each month, location to be announced, twelve P M.
I want that one.
You want that one?
I do, if, if either one of you, okay.
You'd be the prime?
Yes.
Okay, so for water, West Basin, uh, KM will be number one, and who's going to be number two?
I am, the same.
Yeah, alright, cool. Next, please?
Yes, where, where do they meet again, where?
Uh, location to be announced, I will have staff look into that.
And what, what, what day of the month?
Uh, second Monday of each month at twelve P M.
Oh gosh, the same as, uh, JPA? Wow. How do you do that? How do you manage that if you were on, sitting on those two board meetings?
Yeah, we can't make votes.
Okay.
And then according to Exhibit A, the three committees or organizations that were not, were, they weren't on my list were West Vector Control, Centinella Youth Services, and KHHR. Yeah, we decide, okay.
I thought I was, uh, on Centinella.
Okay, so what do we have for Cent, okay, does anybody know? Any info?
What's the meeting time for Centinella?
I don't have that in my notes, uh, currently.
I think it's in the morning, right, Ms. Valentine? Cause you used to go to the Centinella Youth Service meetings.
Yeah, you were.
We didn't do the League of California Cities City Selection.
Right.
Forming too, yeah.
That's the one I was telling you about.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Do we have a volunteer for the, to be the prime?
For which one?
For Centinella and the West Vector.
I'll check with, I'll, I'll take the prime for Centinella.
Okay.
I'll take the second.
Okay.
So who's doing West Vector first?
It's the insect, it's, it's, it's about the insect control. And like the, all the, the fruit flies and everything.
And when do they meet?
It's a serious issue.
When do they meet?
I don't have that information, no.
Let me know, Vaughn.
Okay.
To, to the chair, so just to, you know, to make sure, because look, uh, the reason that I'm saying, because look, the Sub Bay Cock, for example, has an executive committee meeting that I have to attend on Mondays at noon. Uh, they have transportation committee at nine A M. in the morning on Mondays. And then the Clean Power Alliance have the executive committee meetings on, uh, uh, also on the, I think it's on the third, Thursday of the month, of Thursday, so, so these things here, I have two meetings in each organization to attend every month.
It almost seems like the West Vector's connected to the sanitation district, but.
Yeah. Let me know when they meet one, maybe I'll try to go there.
Did we put you down on paper for prime on?
Yeah, put there temporarily, but I need to know when, make sure you don't.
Mr. Mayor, are we gonna select a delegate for that, or excuse me, alternate?
Does anybody wanna be the alternate for that?
Katrina, did you stick? For Vector.
Oh no.
Okay.
You wanna do bugs?
Nobody wants to do bugs.
I just need to know, um.
Yeah, we need to know the time and date, so.
So we're putting you for two, number two.
Number two, okay.
I had, I have a federal job, I don't wanna get dogged. Gotta show up for work every now and then.
Okay.
See, you brought that up, now I'm gonna, now I'm just starting myself.
You just need to go talk to Elon.
Run around the corner. Like, the times to make sure they're not conflicting.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we have something up, so now the City Selection Committee and LA County Division for League of California Cities?
Yes, I don't have that information in my notes, so we need to.
I have it.
Okay.
You have it?
Yeah, it was, we had.
I'm gonna, I have this here, I'll hand it over to you, I'll try to clean it up for you. And I'll repeat it, nah.
Do we, we don't have anything with, for the Olympics on here? Do we don't have an Olympic committee?
That would be an ad hoc committee, that would be outside of regular, uh, county and established committees, that would be just the one-off.
Okay.
One-off as in, just special.
So, I think when I bring that issue up, we'll, we'll create a, an ad hoc committee.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause you have a surprise for us, right?
Yes.
Count me in on that.
Surprise?
Councilwoman Reyes English, um, do you mind sharing, once again, who was on the two committees, organizations that I missed?
So let me start with the LA County, Los Angeles County Division. Um, Los Angeles County Division was myself as prime and Patterson was, um, second.
On the city selection?
Yes. On the, on the, I'm sorry, the Los Angeles County Division, and then I'll tell you on the selection. So the County Division, which is the second line down, League of California Cities, Los Angeles County Division.
Yes.
I was the prime.
You wanna stay?
Yes, please, and, um, Patterson was the second.
I really recommend that you do it, it's in the evenings, right?
Yes, they're evening.
Okay, I can do it then.
They're evening meetings with dinner.
Okay.
Oh, she's gonna be there.
I just have to, you know, during the day, I, if there are meetings during the day, I have to take leave and it just.
It's, it's an evening dinner meeting. The last one was at the LA Air Force Base.
For the City Selection Committee, I'd like to continue being the prime.
Right.
That's what you have reflected there, right?
Yeah, I had me as my second.
Okay.
Right, Vaughn went.
Oh, you were, you're the second?
Yes.
Should've called you, well, you were over there, it was like a decision we had to make on, uh.
Right.
So I ended up calling.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so you. Okay, I have my list, can I just repeat this, guys, just, just double check? My number one on my sheet, uh, Mr. City Manager is gonna indicate the, the Delegate. And then my number two would be the alternate, if there's only number one, it means that nobody else was selected as a, as an alternate. If there's only number one, it means that nobody else was selected as a, as an alternate. Do you have this one? Do you have this, this one?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, okay, so. For my City Finance Advisory Committee, we have, uh, FJ, Faye Johnson, I'm just gonna say first names and last names, just as it's okay. Faye Johnson as the delegate. And we're having Marie Poindexter as the alternate.
It's actually, it's actually Chair and Co-Chair, cause that's not alternate at all. It's, she's gonna be.
Chair and Co-Chair.
Yes, thank you.
But just with the, the spreadsheet that I have here.
Yeah, we're good.
Chair is, uh, Faye Johnson, Co-Chair is, uh, Marie Poindexter. Independent Cities Association. AV will be the delegate, which is me. Uh, Katrina Manning will be the alternate.
You have me as a third.
Uh, unofficial third, yeah. As a note, right there. Independent Cities Risk Management Authority, the ICRMA. We're gonna take the, uh, the recommendation from City Attorney. David Caseris will be the prime there. And Sam English will be the, uh, secondary person there. KHHR Communities Networks Committee. Katrina Manning and Angie Reyes English will both be part of that committee at equal levels. Okay? The League of California Cities City Selection Committee. I will be the prime, AV will be prime, number one. Uh, ARE, Angie Reyes English will be the alternate, number two. The League of California Cities, Los Angeles County Division, Angie Reyes English will be the prime. Faye Johnson will be the alternate. The League of California Cities Revenue and Taxation Committee, Faye Johnson will be the prime. Katrina Manning will be the alternate. Clean Power Alliance. Alex Montero will be the prime. Angie Reyes English will be the alternate. The Sanitation District, number five for LA County. I will be the prime and Alex Montero will be the, the, uh, alternate. The South Bay Cities Council of Governments Board of Directors. Alex Montero will be the prime. Katrina Manning will be the alternate. The RCC, South Bay Regional Public Communications Authority, RCC Board of Directors. Alex Montero will be the prime. Angie Reyes English will be the, uh, alternate. Southern California Associations of Governments, SCAG. The Executive Committee. Okay, I don't, I didn't think we were boring you out there, man. For SCAG, the Executive Committee, Alex Montero will be the prime. Angie Reyes English will be the alternate. For the Southern California Cities Consortium, JPA. Faye Johnson will be the prime with no alternate designated. West Basin Water Association Board of Directors, Katrina Manning will be the prime. With Angie Reyes English being the alternate. The West Vector Control. Uh, and we're gonna have like a note that times to be determined, so that you guys know if you guys will be able to do it. So this might be subject to change, right? So West Vector Control, Alex Montero will be the prime. And Faye Johnson will be the alternate. Centinella Youth Services. Katrina Manning will be the prime. And Faye Johnson will be the alternate. Do I have a motion to accept these?
Don't move.
I'll second. Oh, you, you have a motion, second, okay, got it.
Oh, yeah, the motion. Motion second.
Yes.
You're doing the second?
I'm doing the second.
He's doing the second.
Okay, I make a motion, I think I made the motion.
You made the motion.
Okay, to accept this?
Who's on first?
Please vote.
The votes are in. Voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
All right, awesome. Elected officials reports. City Treasurer. Advisory Committee Member, Poindexter.
Um, good evening, everyone, thank you for coming out. Um, moving forward with the end of the week, I wish you all, uh, very special, uh, blessed and full of love Valentine's Day this week. Um, I met with, uh, Optimize Investment Partners on February fifth regarding investment business options. They are seeking a meeting with the City Manager and Finance Director. So they will reach out, um, at some point to you about that. I did, however, speak with our current investment bank. Um, interest rates are still on track for staying over four percent. The Fed is not looking to change rates this quarter. Um, with all the imposed tariffs, uh, the Fed is definitely in no rush to mess with interest rates. So everything is going to continue this quarter trending over four percent, which is a good thing. The five million that, um, we invested in Treasury bonds, which was new for us, um, towards the end of last year. The five million has now yielded five point six million and is on track for probably five point eight. It is coming to term in March, but we are gonna look to overroll, um, to roll it over. Um, for another six months, just because rates are, are gonna stay the way they are for right now. Um, basically until the, the government is finishing or dealing with all the other changes it's going through right now. So rates are sort of on the back burner. Um, it's also a nice point to, to bring up that Treasuries have not been this high in over twenty years. So even if any of you personally are personally looking at, um, investing, this is now a good time. While you're seeing rates over four percent. Don't ever be afraid to call your local bank and ask for better interest rates, because you could do that, that is your right. So if you have a one percent, one percent saving account, call your bank, ask for three percent. They are allowed to change that for you. Um, in other news, let's see, congratulations, um, to the Haggardies, um, are they still here? Oh, yeah. So thank you again for all the joy and happiness that you bring to a lot of the residents of our city. Um, kudos to South Bay Swim Team, even though they're probably not here. My kids grew up in, uh, South Bay Swim for, for many, 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 many years. Um, at least ten years. So I can, you know, give credit to their program, it's a really great program, it's really full of great people. Um, and that swim team is hard to get on. I tried for seven years to get my kids on that swim team, but their waiting list is long and it's really competitive, but they do great things. I wanted to say thank you to the HMEA for their Super Bowl, um, tell, pre, pre-Super Bowl tailgate, I had a lot of fun. I got a kick out of seeing the City Man, oh, no, no, the City Attorney throwing a football around. Um, that was indeed different to see, he looked like he was having some fun. I would have never imagined him to be throwing a football around, but he looked like he was having such a good time, I was surprised. But it was good to see. Um, so thank you, everyone, for coming out. And a big congratulations to Eric. Um, I'd be the first one to say he probably needs his own proclamation. He has done a lot in the last, like, sixty days, more than we all probably know about. And so have the rest of the directors over in City Hall, so. I see it, thank you, keep up the good work. You're all brilliant in everything that you all do, including the City Manager, who is now a moderator, so. I can't wait to see that in action, but, um, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. City Clerk?
Still the City Clerk. Uh, I, I hope everyone enjoyed our exercise that we did earlier with the QR codes. I know Bill, you really did enjoy it so much. Um, but I want to let everyone know that we are no longer emailing agendas. We had a list of about two hundred people or so that we would email an agenda to and we would get bounce backs or people who said, take me off your list and that type of thing. And to go through and look at those emails would be very difficult. So we have a subscription button online. And it's on the city website, if you go to, uh, our website and City Meetings, in the middle of the page, there'll be a subscribe button. You can click on that, put your email in there, and each time we publish an agenda, you will actually receive it in your email. And that way you, you get it straight from the source and not, uh, you know, convoluted with any other messages. Uh, so. Mr. Williams out there has, uh, the QR code, he was helping out the City Clerk's office today. So if anyone wants to play around with it, or if you have any questions, feel free. We're actually gonna post it in the window as well, so you can stop by. And if you need any help signing up, we'll help you with that. But we will no longer email it and we will not sign you up, you have to do it yourself. So I wanted to also, you know, send, uh, you know, a big shout out to, or big hugs to, uh, Guy Hocker's family, his sendoff was amazing. At Memorial Center with so many people there, it was really nice. Uh, his family was really nice and amazing, just a really nice guy, he's always been very nice to me. Um, thank you to the Haggardies, Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus. Uh, Black History Month, February twenty eighth. It's gonna be here in Council Chambers from four to six. Uh, we'll have lots of surprises, some food, please come out. And, uh, we'll have a lot of, uh, our African-American leaders and impact winners here then. I attended a conference, I missed the tailgate party because I went up north for a conference, for a record management conference. And what that means for the city is that at some point, we are going to adhere to our retention schedule. Meaning that we have times that we're supposed to destroy certain documents and we have not done that. Uh, because, you know, we've been catching up with just getting fully staffed. But at some point, we will address that and I wanted to be a little bit more versed on exactly how to, uh, determine what exactly is a record and when to destroy it based on our legal retention schedule. Uh, with that being said, I want to thank my staff. I want to thank Myra, I want to thank Joy and Diana for all the work that they do. And for all the work that we did in cleaning up our minutes. Um, we have lot, we had lots of minutes we had to get caught up on. And sometimes it's difficult because people don't understand that when we do minutes, we actually have to go through this whole entire meeting again and summarize it. It takes a lot of time, sometimes longer than the meeting itself. Um, so that's a little bit of information for you all there. Uh, in the packet, you all will see that the minutes are there. And so if you ever want to look at them, you can, you can look at them there. Um, I think that was it. And thank you all so much, look forward to the next meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, go ahead.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, thank you. I also attended a conference, uh, since our last meeting, it was the League of Cities Conference. And I got, because I'm a retired veteran, air, um, Air Force. I got recruited into a Veteran Roundtable with the League of the California Cities. And learned a lot of good information, made a lot of good contacts. So for the city, um, that was a good conference for me to go to. I want to thank, um, Eric and the Media Department, outstanding work, very proud of what they're doing. Thanks to Mr. and Mrs. Claus. And, um, in short, I, I had someone reach out to me about, um, trash in their, in their alleyway. And I told him, you know, forget the number, go on three-one-one app. And before she woke up the next morning, the stuff was gone. And that was on a Friday that was an off day. So the three-one-one app really works. It, um, provides data for us to be able to track and trend what's going on in the neighborhoods. So we know if there's a, a particular issue. Like if you have a lot of graffiti in your area and we're able to extract the data out of the three-one-one app. Now we get to look, is there, is there a crime issue in that area? Is there a gang issue in that area? It's not just about the graffiti. So it helps us when, when you use the three-one-one app, if you've subscribed to it, you actually get an email back that, um, your, your issue was received and you have a way of tracking it. So it's, it's an outstanding app and it's being, it's very robust and it's becoming even more robust every day because they're enhancing it. And I want to shout out to Public Works because they put some T-Parking in front of my house. I was excited to see them the other day, I happened to look on my, um, my Ring camera while I was working, I'm like, who are those people out there? So it was awesome to see Public Works out there working. Now we just need to get some, uh, speed bumps, that would be great. Um, other than that, uh, thank you guys for coming out. We gotta get involved, we gotta, we got, you gotta hold your city officials, um, accountable. We have to hold our state government accountable. And I get people that complain and tell me, well, we have to fix this housing issue. And what, and what they're talking about is the six hundred units in a very small area with no parking. Well, that ship sailed. And I, I try to explain that to them, that the city can't, there's nothing we can do about that. Those laws were passed, if you want to do something about it and you're serious about doing something about it, then we need to do another ballot measure. We need to, now that's not something we can do at a city level, but you can do that with your, uh, Assembly Member, uh, Tina McKinnon. And then, um, our Senate. So that's how you fix those problems. But we have to stop just complaining about them, we have to do something about it. Because we're, our hands are tied. In, in the right situation, there's nothing we can do about it, we have to allow it. So i- it's great that you guys, those are watching on TV and those that have spent the time to be here in the evening on our meetings. This is you get, you guys getting involved and that's what we need. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Alex Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, again, good evening, everyone. Um, first, I want to say thank you, thank you to the staff and all the head departments, all the people out there working for us, making this city as a beautiful city, a good neighbor. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Kim, for all your leadership and the chief. Uh, thank you for all those emails, keep up, update what's going on, so thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for nominating me for to be Mayor Pro Temp for twenty-five, twenty-six, I appreciate that, thank you. Um, again, thank you, team and Loretta Haggerty, thank you, you guys being outstanding in our community. So thank you for your, you know, volunteer, for your inspiration. Uh, those stories about those kids are, are beautiful, you know, so to, to say, got something for my mom, you know, that's fantastic. So thank you very much. Um, I want to say, you know, again, thank you to Vaughn and then Eric Chavez and, uh, and, um, Ms. Marie Poindexter have a right to say that, uh, Eric needs, needs his own proclamation because he's everywhere. You know, every single event, you know, taking picture, directing the videos, directing the, uh, drones and e- everything going on. So, um, thank you, because like I said, you, uh, you're putting Hot Town on the map. Because, uh, two years ago, you know, nobody knew what was going on in Hot Town, so thank you for that, I appreciate it very much for that. Um, I want to, uh, also to say thank you to the staff, especially after Parks and Recs. Um, that put, you know, the room together for Guy Hocker's, uh, Celebration of Life. Um, it was a short notice because, you know, the family wanted to be done on, on February the tenth, because they all came out of town. Uh, so, but it was a beautiful event that, uh, almost like three hundred people over there celebrating Guy Hocker's life, you know, what he stood for in this city. Uh, you know, first elected mayor, uh, real estate mogul, you know, he got all those things. Even, uh, I told them that, um, twenty-three years ago, I bought one of the guys, Hocker Townhome, right here on Broadway in Ramona. So he was a, he was a, you know, a great guy, a monetary, and he donated a lot of money to a lot of costs. Uh, especially all the events that we used to put together, from Health Fest to K nine, to, uh, five K, to Food Drive, he always donated money. So, uh, like they said, heaven have given an angel, so thank you for that. Um, just another angel that is in the heavens already is Pablo Catanal. Remember Pablo used to sit right over there, was a council member for the city of Hot Town. Uh, he worked for the state, uh, for the Senate, uh, staff, for the, Theresa Hughes and, uh, Edward Vincent. So he passed away too in December. So I'm gonna, the city is going to do a Celebration of Life for Pablo on March twenty-seven, March twenty-seven from three to five PM at the Berdians Wood Classroom. Uh, we're gonna do a small celebration. We're going to do a small celebration of life for Pablo because it was a small funeral that was done in December in Laguna Hill where her daughter lived. So it was kind of like a short notice too. So, but we want to celebrate Pablo because he did a lot for this community. It's on Thursday night, oh, no, Thursday afternoon, 3:00 to 5:00, okay? Also, I want to say thank you to Mr. Norris, and I know, you know, it's not just you, but the committee, especially the public works and engineer who put the draft, the Hawthorne Safety Plan. The Hawthorne Safety Plan, and it was a very good document with a hundred-something pages. And I, I was very impressed because, you know, safety is one of our issue in the city. So especially parking and driving, people, you know, driving fast in our streets. So that safety plan, well-designed, well-done. So thank you for that. I appreciate that very much. Again, Vaughn, I know we talk about the, the trash in the alleys. If you can look at those phone numbers, review them, maybe we can come up with a dedicated line somewhere because it's true. They, these contractors are coming, you know, dumping stuff in our neighborhoods. It's not just Holly Park, you know, right here, in my street, over there on Combleum Street, it's all over the place. So we need to keep eye on. Even I think that maybe we should put those drones on the air to catch those perpetrators over there. So that's, that's the other thing we need to do. And again, I want to say thank you to Mr. Mayor to, to tell the people that we are not terminating no contracts at the poolside. So thank you for, you know, put the records right, that our staff has been communicating with them, trying to come up with solution and, and a balanced approach, how we're going to address all those issues. So thank you for that too, for the staff, because I know it takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of negotiation, but the schedule is important, so, and our community is important. So I appreciate that. And my last thing I want to say, because a lot of some of you out there have been talking about your electric bill, your electric bill, some of you seeing them going up, going up, going up. And I need, I have to tell you, Southern California Edison, even for us Hawthorne, we are part of the Clean Power Alliance, the Consumer Choice Agency. Southern California Edison charge for everything. They charge for the transmission line, the delivery, your, your, your electric, for every single thing that they charge. So, and they went to the California Utility Commission, and they asked to increase the rate because of two years ago, the fire that they were fined guilty of setting up because of transmission lines broke down. So now the, the, for all the consumers, taxpayers going to pay for that, right? It's not, it's not coming from Edison stocks or you, that. It's going to come from your pocketbook through your electric bill. So you're going to see, again, starting March 1st, a potential 10% to 15% increase on your electric bill from Southern Edison transmission lines and delivery charge. But your electric bill that have a section that only the, the server that you going to draw from your meter is going to go through the Clean Power Lines. Clean Power Line is going to only bill you for what you use on a monthly base. And that part, you're not going to see no increase because last Thursday, I went to the Board of Direct Access meeting. Thirty-three cities and two counties, County of Ventura and County of Los Angeles, we vote not to increase the electric bill for all the customers that is a Clean Power Lines. So we are going to put $75 million back into the communities that belongs to the Clean Power Lines for, for us not to increase the bill. Because when Edison charge for the liver of the electricity and the, and the transmission lines, the Clean Power Lines have to pay those fees. And so we choose not to increase our bills for our consumers, consumers, okay? So when, when Edison is talking out there, but basically, the California Utility Commission is protecting Edison of all these fires they have caused in the past, billions of dollars that is coming out of our, our bills. Like they create this insurance fund, insurance fund that is $21 billion. And guess who that money is coming from? From all the bills that Southern California has as consumers. So $21 billion is putting on a saving account to pay for negligence that Edison and PG have done in California. On that note, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Angie Reyes English, welcome back.
Thank you. And let me just wrap up what you just said. That's the difference between a nonprofit organization providing electric services and a investor-owned profit-making Edison. Exactly. Thank you. Let me just, first of all, congratulate the Hagardys for all that you're doing and continue to do, and look forward to this December, Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus. I want to make mention the Guy Hawker Memorial. I'm so sorry that I missed that. I truly am, was in shock when I actually received that email from Vaughn. So my condolences to the Hawker family and all those that knew him and friends and colleagues alike. The Chamber of Commerce made mention of their Marriott Hotel event, March 13th. I look forward to going to that. Thank you, city clerk, for your information that you provided this evening and all the work that you're making and doing, especially your CMA, you just, you know, you Certified Municipal Clerk certification, and how you're helping along with Councilmember Montero for the upcoming African-American Black History Month. So thank you for that. I hope Rick Carver is okay. Pulling, pulling for Rick Carver and prayers for him and his recovery. I want to address, along with some efforts that the mayor and I will be working on, which include beautification projects to assist in the illegal dumping that is happening in our city. Let me just make mention, I live near Costco off of Prairie, and I actually caught someone with a U-Haul truck backing up, blocking our drive, our carport, opening it up along with another person, and literally dumping all their, their palm pods, the, you know, the trees that you cut. I mean, just a truckload. I came out, my neighbor came out, we confronted them. We took video and we provided that to the police. And let me just say, I agree totally that we need to do more to address the illegal dumping in our city. Having said that, I'd like our city manager to bring back our ordinance on illegal dumping. I want to include additional fines where we can. I want to address the, the reward monies to not only capture or find, you know, catch these individuals, but to assure full prosecution so that the reward is then provided. The beautification project that I want to make is, along with city departments, Public Works, to do, again, a, a cleanup because there's a lot of folks in the new year that have a lot of stuff that they have to throw out. I know I'm one of them. But making a new start early and then maybe midday, mid-year, and then maybe again later on. But mayor and myself want to make sure to do that, to address all the concerns with regards to illegal dumping. Rob Williams, thank you so much for the events that you, like many other constituents in our city, enjoyed throughout the year. I, I agree, we need to do a little bit more with regards to a potential carnival in the future and then, you know, the, a potential parade, and that would be awesome. I just want to make mention of all the attendees that were here today to, you know, from leaps and bounds to Hawthorne Swim Team. You know, the Hawthorne Swim Pool is very popular, not only for our regular swimmers, but also those with disabilities, especially special needs and Down Syndrome and, and folks that look forward to those times in the pool. I'm very sensitive to that. I had, you know, my brother, obviously Down Syndrome, my sister-in-law, Down Syndrome. And we need to do better with regards to assuring those that are most vulnerable and usually are without, that they don't come up with, you know, obviously, the display that was here, you know, very, very upset of the potential of something being taken away from them, especially to disabilities, students, children, and adults alike. So I'm very happy about that. I look forward to the city manager and city departments working in collaboration to assure that there's equal time for everyone, and we're making efforts to assure that no one's excluded. I also want to make mention with regards to public comment during public comment period, I want to assure that we're not infringing on anybody's First Amendment rights to speak with regards to whether or not it's a repeated agenda item, comments, et cetera. It's their right. They signed a form to speak, and I think they, they are given, you know, that right to speak and say whatever they want to speak in spite of whether or not it's a repeated quoted comment. So I want to make sure that we're not infringing on anyone's First Amendment rights. With regards to banning gas blowers, I'm, I'm totally with you, mayor. If there was a way we could do that, I, I would love to ban gas leaf blowers myself. City manager, can you please provide here soon what's the status of Ramona Park? I have constituents that are emailing me on social media asking about the park, when it'll be completed. It's my understanding that there's parents that can't take their kids to the park. The park has some damage to it that they don't want their kids on, and I have pictures of that. That includes some sensitive bars and things that are with sharp, you know, edges and stuff like this. So that's a concern. But I, I do know that we had out in the lobby, some projects that we're working on, those include parks, and I know Ramona Park was one of them, and I'm elated to know that we have upcoming new parks in our city. So I'd like to know what's the status of Ramona Park? And then I'm going to shoot you, excuse me, shoot you over the email to the constituents so that you could respond to her directly. I also ask for her to email me at my email versus social media. You know, I, I, I like the fact that there's, you know, discussion with regards to holding state and assembly, you know, representatives accountable, but we also need to hold our federal government accountable. And because we have some change of the guard, I just want to make sure that information is being provided, especially to those individuals that are afraid right now with immigration and all that's taking place. We have a duty as council members to represent everybody, and that includes everybody here in the city of Hawthorne. And I know that there's been press that's out in the media right now, like one, I'll give you an example, came out yesterday, ICE plans major immigration operations in LA before LA March. So these types of things are what has folks scared. Not to make mention, being back in the state of Idaho where I was born and raised, the scare that's happening in Idaho. So just to show transparency, I want to make sure that we have resources for families if, if, you know, that's what they need with regards to not just immigration, but civil rights violations. So if we could find some partnerships with Chirla and some other organizations to help families, that would be great. If I could be helpful, I will be helpful as well. I have a lot of constituents that I've assisted with regards to casework, and some of it all often had to do with, you know, English learning classes, had to do with just information that they weren't aware of. And so I just want to continue in those efforts to assure that families that are not in the know have general information. And that was why it was so important to me to bring WIRLY, the translation services, so that everyone is able to communicate in their own language. Look forward later on, mayor. I know that you're a board member with Naleo National Association of Latino Elected Officials, and congratulations on your appointed boardship. I know that you won that, and congratulations to that. Look forward to that in, in July sometime. I also want to make congratulations to the council and the mayor for the fast track of appointments this evening. So look forward to hearing, reporting back from committees that you sit on, will sit on. There was an email I received on February 4th from Mr. Muhammad Adam. He wants to know about freeway entrances and why there isn't more, you know, cautionary lights and things like this. Just an FYI, Caltrans belongs to the state. They're responsible for the, the lights, you know, and a lot of the lights are not working right now because obviously there's, you know, wire theft, right? So those are some things that we need to address here in our city, but I'd like to also address the cleanup. So in collaboration with our beautification and Caltrans, that we have a uniform cleanup of the on-ramps and off-ramps because oftentimes they look disgusting. And then with that, I just want to make mention the homeless count that's coming up, February 20th, from 6:30 to 7:30. If you could help us count folks here in Hawthorne, that would be great. Look forward to our Black History Month, and I want to be able to give $300, Vaughn, to city clerk to help, and councilmember Montero. And the community is welcome, so you could come to the lobby. There's going to be great food and entertainment, so look forward to that. And then the community cleanup on March 15th. Now, we talked about the beautification, and I don't want to be redundant. If this is the time that we're selecting the beautification cleanup, mayor, we're looking at Saturday, March 15th, right? So thank you already to those that helped in that, and we need volunteers. So I know we're going to be working with our schools collectively so that we could get kids to help us and get credit for it, but we need to make sure that the kids are actually picking up. I've been with kids, and it's, they're just kicking it. So I want to make sure our students are learning and more importantly, are worthy of receiving credits and scholarships through assistance of the city and those that they help on the council. So, and then lastly, I just want to thank everyone for your support during my family I was holding it together, but two family members passed away within two weeks of each other, my brother and my brother-in-law. So it took, it took me much time to, to be in Idaho, which was fine, you know, being with family. But I'm the only one out here in California. All my family's in Idaho, so there's over 100 of us, if not more, maybe 200. So I feel like the, the little lost sheep, but thank you. I just want to say thank you because everybody's been very, very giving. And just yesterday, I received a bouquet of flowers. So thank you to the Hawthorne Police Officers Association and to the city manager for flowers to my family, and I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, councilwoman.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Manning.
Thank you, mayor. I want to first start off by saying, Councilwoman Reyes, I am saddened by your loss, and please accept my condolences for your family. I also had an opportunity to attend Guy Hawker's memorial, and like my colleagues mentioned, it was pretty packed. And so I appreciate the opportunity to speak at his memorial. So I also remember at our last council meeting, I can't remember who mentioned us, but they talked about us being a part of the Pasadena Parade. And I know we talked about the float, but I know that we could, we may not be able to afford a float, but what we could do as a council is ride in a car and put our name on the side, Hawthorne City Council. So I wanted to ask Vaughn if maybe we could look into being a part of the Pasadena Parade next year. I was thinking about what Robbie talked about in terms of us having a carnival and a parade, and immediately I thought about, it would be a great way to break ground or have a grand opening when we have our civic center. We could have a parade for that to celebrate. So I also want to see if that's something that we could possibly do, and I think we have enough time to put it together. But I also like for you to look into that as well. I got a call from a residence that live off of Imperial and 100, I'm sorry, Imperial and Van Ness. And he lives in a cul-de-sac, and he, he actually came here to file a complaint. But he talks about the consistency of young folks coming, doing donuts in front of his house and blocking it where he can't get out. So sorry to give you so many directives, but I also would like you to maybe look So sorry to give you so many directives, but I also would like you to maybe look into that. And I just have one more directive to give. When I was at the memorial center, I was, went to the ladies' room and the lock on the ladies' room, the door is missing. So if you can have maybe Public Works fix that door. And then as I was walking out the bathroom, there's a crack, cracks of the tile right there that I almost tripped over. So when I wear heels, the heel would go in the crack. So if you could take a look at that, I greatly appreciate it. I'm sorry to give so many directives, but I felt like those things were important. My last one, I'm sorry, I think Angie mentioned this, but if someone on your staff maybe could make sure all of the phone numbers are working. I have gotten a few calls this week about certain numbers not working. So if maybe you could just check to make sure that all of the numbers that we have listed actually works. Okay, the mayor is going to be mad at me for this one, but as Eric was talking about our ability to have somebody come in, I thought about, I attend a lot of the supervisors meetings and during public comment, they actually have folks that actually call in to their meetings to express whatever it is that they were expressing. And I just wanted to maybe ask if my fellow colleagues thought, what they thought about that. And I don't know if it's something we could talk about now or is it something that I need to put on the agenda?
That will have, we will have to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
With notice.
Thank you.
Would you like that, is that?
Yes, please, for the next agenda. Also Vaughn, you are consistent with your reports and I do truly appreciate the chief, the reports that you send and the reports that you send Vaughn. Some of the reports that I read with, as regards to our police department, I just thank you guys every single day for putting your life on the line and some of the things that you have to deal with. And so I truly, truly appreciate the sacrifice that you guys make every single day when you go out there in the community to protect us. Because I'm going to be honest, I'm not doing that. But those guys are super, super brave in the things that they do. And so I appreciate the hard work that you guys do in addition to sending us reports of the work that you guys do. And I really, truly appreciate Eric because in addition to what you guys see, he also does other things like help me figure out how to put stuff onto my computer. So he is a man of many talents and we are so grateful to have him on our staff. The work that he does is amazing and no matter what, like he figures it out really quickly. And I appreciate you Eric so much and I know I can't give any more directives, but I'll be back with a, with a proclamation next council meeting for him. And then I want to talk about the Business Expo is happening April 24th. You can see that information on our website. Please attend. It's a, it's a job fair. It is a panel discussion with entrepreneurs and it's also a Business Expo. So please make sure that you attend. If you know someone is looking for job opportunities, tell them to come. You'll start to see us advertising it around the city, but please come, please come out and support. We're going to be also having our Women's History Month, which is going to be March 29th. It's going to be at the Memorial Center. And then we're going to have Mother's Day, which is March, May, May, May 10th. And so it's going to also be at the Memorial Center as well. And then the last thing that I want to say, or two more things, is I wanted to ask, I wanted to bring back our city managers agreement. Robert, do we need to do that in a closed session?
If we're going to discuss performance evaluation, that needs to be done in a closed
It can still be brought back if you want to think about the context in which you want to do it.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be here, does it?
Well, I don't, I don't know the exact detail of what we're contemplating.
Well, we, we received information that we need to address and so I'm not sure.
If it doesn't involve performance evaluation, if there is a adjustment that you want on the city manager's employment agreement, then it doesn't have to be a close, then it doesn't need to be in a closed session.
Okay. Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day to you all and thank you. I had a lot tonight, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember colleagues for being here. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Upcoming, Mayor Pro Tim-elect Alex Montero, thank you. So I also agree that we should bring back the city manager's contract and I'll be just, I'll be more direct about it. I think, you know, he's been doing a great job and I think a proper adjustment based on the, you know, what the standards are out there for city manager of his caliber are warranted, don't you guys think? Okay, let's give a round of applause to him for all this.
End of caller.
Even, even though he gets mad at me for just doing stuff. But that's his job, actually, think about it. You know, we need somebody who's going to be telling us not just yes, not just yes, but no, because he's protecting the coffers of the city and our ability to operate and give you guys the services. So that's very important quality and I think we all need to accept that that's a good thing, right? So let me check that off. Condolences once more go to Guy Hocker's family, the friends in the community. I was there at the tribute to Guy Hocker, Mayor Guy Hocker. And like I said, he's a once a mayor, always a mayor, so he's the, the image of statesmanship that I always looked up to. So, you know, he was, in some ways, you know, he was a, it's a hard, big shoes to fill, like they say. So I'm glad that I was able to see him when he was a councilmember and as a mayor back in the day. And I aspire to be someone, as a leader, just like him. So unfortunately, he's not with us anymore, but his spirit does live on. So perhaps there is some type of building or something off a building or wing of some type of building that we have here that we can aim after him. So let's just keep that open, see what we could think about. But on that same token, I think we should have, like, I also agree with councilmember Alex Montero, we should have a memorial that's similar to what we just saw for Mayor Guy Hocker for councilmember Pablo Catanal. You know, he was, he was somebody who ran multiple times and finally made it on the third or fourth time as well. Yeah, first Latino, first Latino councilmember. And on one of those runs, if you guys remember, you guys know what I'm going to say, right? He, he won, he won. But somehow in the middle of the night, somebody found a ballot box with just enough votes, by like seven votes that were like at the bottom of this ballot box that overturned, you know, the victory for the, for him in favor of somebody else. So just, yeah, there was, elections were run different. So if we could have that, I support that 100%. We are going to have it, so yeah, that's. Rick Carver, I send my, you know, my thoughts and wish, best wishes for his recovery. So I hope he does well. Yeah, no, yeah, he fell over there. The gas blowers, I'm glad that Ms. Lisa came to speak to the council so she, we could hear from her, what her ideas were on the matter. Always the question is the enforcement aspect and we talked about this at the last meeting and, you know, we went back and forth and I think a more immediate thing that we could address for sure and absolutely with the laws that we have our books, on our books, is the start time for, for work in the morning, loud noise. And it's, during the week, I believe it's like eight o'clock and on the weekends it's nine o'clock. So, you know, clearly they're, they're starting to do the work on Saturday mornings, like at 6:30, it's like, come on, that's an easy one to catch somebody. As opposed to the leaf blower where they have a leaf blower and you're like, hey, can I just look at your leaf blower and all that stuff? So the noise, noise nuisance laws are easier to enforce. So we could still talk about that, but you know, just let's keep in mind what we talked about last time too, right? The, the parade, the fair, I wonder where you got that idea and I wonder where you heard that recently, huh? Yeah, 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 yeah. But it'd be awesome, it'd be nice to do. I think, actually you came up with a good idea because if we're going to have one, that would be one of the best opportunities to do something. Sure, it costs a bit of money, it costs a lot, but then at some point we have to reach that standard where others, other cities have stuff and we can always be the best. And our, in our, our parade, our carnival can be better than the ones that these other cities can have. So yeah, let's just start thinking about it and let's just start putting feelers out there and just seeing how much things cost, just so that we just have enough time planning and then we could ask our, our vendors out there and all the people who are here in the city that have companies here, it's like, I don't know if we can get Elon Musk to contribute or something, but you know, maybe not, so, or maybe yes. So it's worth asking SpaceX to maybe sponsor, sponsor us on something like this, you know, since we've been accommodating them here and hosting them here in our city. So there's just different ideas, right? Thanks for bringing it up again and backing me up on this, backing each other up.
I'm the same age, so that's how I remember it.
I know. That's not funny, but that's, that's true. Oh, okay. Sir, can you tell us, Mr. City Manager, can you tell me what the budget is for the conference, the allotment for the conferences are for our councilmember colleagues and if the city treasurer and city clerk are included in that?
That's a loaded question that I'm not prepared for. I can, I can give you an estimate of what I recall it is. So there's two different line items. There's a travel budget for conferences and meetings and there's a separate line item for conferences that you're assigned to those committees as we were, you're assigned today.
So the conferences that we're assigned to today, I want to leave as this, that's covered.
Okay, so the second question.
From my understanding is that we have 3,000?
That's correct.
And I would like to propose that we raise it another thousand just to accommodate some of the great conferences that we have out there.
For this fiscal year? Are you speaking of '25, '26?
Yeah, '25, '26. I don't want to throw anything off for this year. Well, let's, let's, come, come June when we look at the next one, if you could just try to work that in there.
Okay.
And if we could take a look at, see if the city, can you tell us if you do have something? If we could please add, do that for them as well, for training.
Noted. And as for new fiscal year, '25, '26?
Yeah, not now, yeah, yeah.
Noted.
I think it's only fair, there's a lot of great conferences. I don't think people up here are abusing of it. There's a lot of them and then the price of everything has gone up. That's the problem. The price of everything has gone up. You know, there's like, you can only do one, you know, with, with what we have right now. And then if we have the second one, you can't because it's just, you got used up on the first one and it's our, we have to come into this role already being able to hit the ground running, but to continue growing when it comes to policy and new ideas out there, we need to be out there networking and going to these select types of conferences. You good?
To the chair.
Yes.
Is it possible that we can get an actual budget of what it really costs to go to these trips? Because, you know, I think just raising it a thousand dollars doesn't really cover still, it won't, if one trip costs 3,000 and you're raising it a thousand, you're still not able to go, you're just going to have that extra money, so.
The guesstimate, the guesstimate based on like, since I've been here since 2009, has been that nothing has exceeded 2,000. I mean, I don't know.
That's why I was asking. That's why I was asking, because I'm going to a conference and it was $1,300, but that doesn't include a travel for my car, for a rental car.
So then that'll add up to 2,000.
So I'm just saying that if we can maybe ask them to give us an actual idea of what it really costs instead of us just throwing numbers out there.
I like to start off with a thousand, raising it to 4,000 because we need to be incremental in this whole thing. And if there's a special case, you could come to the council, just like you have with other things that you've come before us and you could ask us to see if we could approve something like separate, but that shouldn't be the formal operating procedure. But I think it's good that we just bring it up, just so that people can at least cover two conferences, not just one and a half a conference, you know? Hey guys, I just showed up, I gotta go because I can't afford that second half of this conference and.
To the chair. Just real quick, when you say the 4,000 for the conference, is that just registration or does that include the travel and per diem and registration?
That, that covers the entirety of the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, that's expensive.
Registrations are, well, yeah, that's not good because I want to kind of go through my stuff. I just think we need to put like, we need to be out there universal. What's one big thing? Actually, now you guys bring it up. How do you guys, like, actually, everybody says here, we, you know, with this, let's go out there so we can, even when we're going out to some of these conferences, that we're able to make connections, so we can bring some of these resources, some of these business to the city. That's what we are, we're the agents for the city. We're the biggest ambassadors for the city and that's actually where this is going to help, okay? We're the biggest ambassadors. All right, so let me just check that off. Beautification, I did talk to my councilmember colleague, Angie Race English, and since we kind of go a little bit further back, I thought it'd be good to work with her on this. And we've seen kind of the natural progression of like things that have happened, the challenges and things that we've overcome and things that we've done. So there's been great successes when it comes to cleaning up the city and the code enforcement is working hard, our city staff is working hard and sure, we just got to do some fine touches on being able to get those telephone numbers correct, making sure our 311 app is just going through. I mean, I've never called anything in, but if you say it works, then it works. Maybe just taking a look at that and if things are good, they're good, we just leave it on. But I just like to take a look at it with her and then come with city, some fine touches, you know, because we have, we have a team that talks about that within the city, but from the elected officials perspective, we would like to also just kind of give some feedback too. And then part of that is some of these, the approach, I think that people comply and say, you give them a warning, okay? They know when you're going to come back and check, they know about when. So then they comply for that period of time when you come back, right? But the thing is, after you leave and everything checks off, then they go back to their old, old self and keep the status of like, in the conditions of their properties and certain of those violations start popping up. So we, there's something that I would like to take a look at, how do we ensure that that's the, that never really happens again? You see what I'm saying? That it's a permanent change in their behavior or their upkeep of their properties or their businesses? Okay, that's, that's one of my concerns and maybe possibly increasing the fines on some of these things. See with allowable within the, within the state regulations because there's limits, but there's also things that we could have the flexibility on increasing. I also believe, I want to thank the residents that came, the children that came with their parents today to talk about the pool and I really just appreciate. with their parents today to talk about the pool, and, uh, I really just appreciate them expressing themselves, I just, um, I just, uh, just kinda disappointed in the, in the leadership there at the groups, leaps and bounds, and how they were not honest with them, saying, uh, not giving credit to the staff that's trying to work with them, and our city attorney had to step in and just reiterate that. So, I think, uh, we need to be, like I said, have a balanced approach, work with them, talk to them, but they need to understand that we also need to, uh, certainly, make sure that we have services that are of high caliber, equal to or even greater than the neighboring cities when it comes to offering things to the residents, okay? And plus, the students and the children are always welcome, anybody is welcome during those rec, rec hours, and that leaps and bounds is also can be using those facilities, that's important to say, nobody's saying you can't come, no, of course, come during those times, but we also have some other times, uh, sep, uh, that we could offer you. I think, last thing? Okay, one, one thing I wanted to mention, okay, also, with all respect to my council colleagues, we just need to reiterate, we talked about the decor, et cetera, and all the different things that we're gonna do, that's fine, but we also have some ordinances on the books that has limited the time that we speak, three minutes for the people on oral communications, a limit of times for presentations to ten minutes, and also limits, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but, you, you already know, it limits the amount of directives that we give, okay? The limit is two, I believe, two directives. Sure, there's things that we can, and let's not even call them directives, there's things, hey, you know what, there's something over, there's something trash over here, that's not really a directive of, you know, it's, I say, hey, it just brings things to attention, so now, let's not call them directives, like, hey, just wanna bring this attention to this, et cetera, but if we wanna count directives, we kinda just need to be mindful of, uh, you know, our, our staff and the fact that they have a pile of things. Have I exceeded my directives count? I know, today?
No, you have not.
Ah, he's trying to be nice to me. Okay, no, 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 but, but, no, 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 I, I, it's wonderful, we're all excited, just to, let's just be mindful with that. Last thing is the, um, you're right, Councilwoman, uh, Angie Reyes English, I think it's right that we have those resources, because, um, I'll be honest, there's a lot of, there's some, the media's very alarmist also, when it comes to certain things that are happening, and they're scaring our, they're the ones that are scaring our peoples most, sometimes, giving false information. Social media can also be alarming as well, so if we have those, uh, resources available, if they were to, if people were to inquire with us, that we could direct them to the right locations and the right, uh, groups that will give them the accurate information and support. Their, Spanish media's alarmist, man, God, Jesus, they might go, oh, ah, everything's gonna fall apart, you know what I'm saying? And that's not always, that's not always the case, that's, you know, sure, I have opinions on the matter, you know, on the immigration enforcement, et cetera, but it's, hey, that thing's has been happening, we've had the same levels, even higher levels of enforcement on immigration in previous administrations, but now it seems to be, uh, just on the top of everybody's mind, because, you know, we'll see how everything pans out, right? And then, uh, at a courtesy for my council member colleague, the Mayor Pro Tem-elect Montero, the Hawthorne Moose Lodge seventeen forty-six is having a Valentine's Day, uh, dinner, Friday the what, fourteenth? This is Friday?
It's Valentine's Day.
Oh, wow, I didn't, Friday the fourteenth, I just don't know, it's not like I have anything going on, no. So, Friday the fourteenth, you wanna be on Valentine? Ah, Friday the fourteenth.
I'll have to think about that.
Valentine's dinner for two, fifty dollars, fish or steak, so that's fifty bucks, so twenty-five, twenty-five. And what is the thirty for one person?
Individuals, thirty.
Individuals is thirty, and, uh...
Vegas night?
Vegas night.
Vegas night.
Five hundred, so this is good, actually, and the food's there, it's really good.
That include your play money.
Okay. Thank you, guys. I know the meeting's long, but let's just, uh, Black History Month, you guys have the information, I think you already mentioned it, and let's, uh, let's, uh, close our, our the meeting in just like a moment of silence once more, um, in, uh, thinking about Mayor Guy Hocker, and we're thinking about Angie's family, and, uh, anybody else who's passed away that's very important to us. Okay, may they all rest in peace, okay? Um, this meeting's adjourned at nine thirty-five.